Are you, I had a question about my item in the agenda.
Yes.
So when I made the dates, I didn't think about the first fact that the first Saturday of of September is Labor Day weekend. I was wondering if it's possible to make it the following weekend?
I would think that's not a problem when that comes up. Just we'll talk about that.
Okay, okay. What time do you think that'll be? Because I know somebody wanted to give me a call. It's the eighth item.
Yeah, I really can't estimate.
Is the meeting officially beginning at 6:30 or 7?
Seven o'clock.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, officially.
Probably be like 20 minutes into the meeting or something like that.
I would say, yeah.
Okay, should I head out or should I? I can just mute and hide my.
The early part of the meeting is going to be executive session, so you won't be able to participate or be there anyway. So you probably don't, you can log back in at seven o'clock.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Megan, I might need to click out of this thing because my headphones aren't working and I'm getting the computer over the, so when we go to executive session, it would all be able to be heard by the family. So I gotta try to figure out.
Oh.
I gotta.
Just leave the meeting.
Okay, I'm gonna leave and I'll come back. Your speaker is not working.
Oh, it's your speaker, not your headphones. Go back there. Mine always works.
Yes.
Yeah, just try.
Chris, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear my TV? I can't find the remote.
Megan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
She's responding, but I can't hear her, I don't think.
Picture Jeff's, Greg's head.
Can you put your thumb up if you can hear me? Okay, and I can't hear you. That's the problem.
I'm not muted.
Go here.
Can people hear me?
Yes, sir.
He has a headphones. He's troubleshooting a headphone issue.
I can hear it now. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you speak?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
I can't hear them.
So we can say anything we want to about David right now?
Exactly. Yeah, you got it.
Yeah, I can't hear you guys. I don't know why.
Log back out.
I'm gonna log out and try to log back in.
Is he hiding?
It'll be 75 degrees on Sunday. It's Friday.
Sunday? No, Friday.
No, Friday.
Yeah.
I meant to say Friday.
Sunday is gonna be yucky.
Saturday and Sunday gonna stink. Seems like that's our weekend, our weather pattern every spring.
Yeah, hopefully he's not like that after this.
Well, I was supposed to clear up for Sunday.
Oh, and I, oh, good.
I mean, not get back up to 75, but at least not be raining.
I like your weather, man. Way better than Armand's.
Yeah, but we still get paid if we get it wrong.
Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I can't hear you guys. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we could hear you.
Oh, boy.
Don't turn the microphone.
Now?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Okay, I can hear you, but it's, it's it's gonna be on regular. So my wife went upstairs for executive session and so that, because I don't think it's, for some reason, like my regular PC told me it had to like reload today or something. I don't know. I mean, I'm not a techie guy, but I don't know why this thing isn't working.
Is it your, you can't hear us though, David?
I can hear you now, yes.
Is it your Surface?
No, I'm using my regular PC, my family PC. Usually I use another laptop and that had to re, it said it had to reset itself or something. I don't know. It's only 23% through and it's been going for like four hours. I don't know what the hell's going on.
So you know, to Jeff's point, I never had any problems with the Surface.
I had a problem two weeks ago where the same thing that's happening to David happened to me and I.
With the Surface?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
One day it wouldn't come on. It wouldn't turn itself on. And that's the only problem I ever had. And the guy called me up from town hall and you know, the IT, whoever that we use.
Yeah.
Never been a problem.
I'm still waiting for mine to come back.
You broke, but you broke it. You broke it.
It wasn't me. But I can't use the Chromebook because, because the Chromebook freezes.
I don't know if it's these headphones that I've got and because Stephanie uses this all the time for, for her meetings with various things and it's never had an issue. I use it tonight and it's an issue. I don't know if it's the headphones I'm using or what.
Or it could be you.
Could be, hold on. Now, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, and I can hear, okay. Speak again.
Hello.
Hello.
On both. It's on headphones. It's on.
Now in stereo for David.
Yeah. Okay, now I think I'm okay. Can speak like a dog.
Yeah.
All right, now I think I'm okay. I'm okay. All right. We're in regular session here, right, Megan? So if you want me to do the script now or wait until we get back into?
I think you should wait. That way the, the general public can hear it.
All right, so let's.
Don't we have to make a motion to?
We have to make a motion to enter into executive session.
I will move to enter into executive session to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body to a 63 Summer Street Mayor.
Second. Okay, motion's made and seconded. Roll call vote. Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes too. Let's join room one.
Hi, I gotta go to my meeting, but hi. In the kitchen. This is probably the last time. Hi, baby girl.
You playing with the trains? Hey, where's Percy? You know where Percy is? Good job, that's Percy. Where's Thomas? All right. Crap in the basement, but hers. Saw this base that was really not looking. Not to come out of her house. Mom said, want to bring it to her? I showed it to her. I said, yeah, this came from the house. She goes, oh, that's yours. I said, yeah, I'll go over there. No, no. I don't want to leave it here. Must wait somebody to steal it. Can you take it home to my house? I said, yeah, okay. I put her over on the window. We don't even know it yet. What did I do?
I had my principal that I said, she's out. That's the message. She was like, would you afford 30 minute lunches or 60 minute lunches during P E?
You said 60.
I did. I said, so here is my response because I'm like, all right, I'm getting like. I felt surprised. So Friday it would be nice to get out at 2:30. Because I was like, where, why are you left? Why? Team last year who's been on first grade. She was in on her meeting. So today we lost all of our crafts because we had the in the bathroom. And Liz was in on that meeting. She said, this is, we had to ask for it. We do get, and so I think that's where she's at because we were never at. You're trying to be once again, speaking for the people.
It might happen.
Is it possible for me to check conductivity, connectivity? Because I just logged on and I'm on my phone. Do I need to be recognized as present? Well, maybe they could put a cell tower on the new fire station. I heard somebody. That sounded good.
Hello? We can hear you.
Yes.
I'm so very glad you can hear me. I'm waiting for the public participation or public comment section. Sorry, it's very unclear when you folks speak, but I'm trying.
That sounds familiar when our kids were little.
Well, this is Kate and I'm gonna log off. I'm heading home to get on a desktop and hopefully I'll have better connectivity. Again, I'm just here to participate in public comment. So I'll see you in about five minutes. Thank you.
All right. Sorry, we are a bit late for those who are waiting for us. I have not yet read the script for the meeting, public meeting, so I will do so right now. This is David Gavin, Chair of the Maynard Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Justine St. John.
Yes.
Jeff Swanberg.
Yes.
Krista Silva.
Yes.
Armand Dear-Percurian.
Yes.
Staff Greg Johnson.
Yes.
Megan Zamuta.
Yes.
And Becky. I see Becky is here. She can hear us. All right. Good afternoon or good evening. This, the open meeting of the select board is being conducted via Zoom. Everybody on the agenda will be participating remotely and we will share, we will allow the public to provide comments via Zoom. The board would like to hear public comments and if there's further action is required by the board, I will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, we may, if we're able, within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Please note that while we're on Zoom here, if it's a courtesy and if the meeting or hearing, we will not suspend it or terminate it if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless it's otherwise required by law. The agenda was posted on the town's website and identified how the public can join us. Please note that it's being, our meeting is being recorded and that everybody is participating via Zoom. Therefore, be aware that other people may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer because anything that you do broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting except for the executive session All of the materials for this meeting, except for the executive session materials, were available on board docs. And I recommend that members and the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless I otherwise know. Turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do, allow me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude, I'll go down the line of members inviting everyone by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold your, until your name is called. If you're participating via Zoom, as we all are, please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking. Remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps to generate accurate minutes. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. And if members wish to engage in colloquially with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself. So with that, we will move on to the first item on the regular agenda this evening, which is public comments. Are there any public comments this evening?
I have, I have one.
Go ahead, Chris.
I'd like to make a public comment and recognize the passing of the father of the public comment, Victor Tomel. And if the Chair would indulge me, I'd like to suggest that we have a moment of silence to honor Mr. Tomel at the moment of the public comments.
Certainly, very appropriate.
Thank you.
Let's all join if they moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Any other public comments? Hearing none?
Yes, I have a public comment.
Oh, please go right ahead. Can you give us your name and your home address, please?
Sure. My name's Kate Kremins-Vaspassis and I live on Great Road 316 in Maynard. And you've all heard from me before regarding the condition of Route 117 Great Road from Parker Street to the Sudbury Line. I've been working on this in the way that I thought we should be working on it, which is through the proper channels for five years, back with the former DPW person. I was told last year that I should contact the select people because the select board are the people who make those kinds of decisions. Having gone through this sort of a long process, I want to say that the DPW has done everything they possibly can. Before I even finish an email to the office, I get up, I walk over and they're out there filling these holes. It's frustrating for them. The walls in my house are cracking. I have a lot of jokes that we could tell, but I'm very serious in that a few weeks ago, I called the police station because over ten inch hole was in front of my house and we could hear the axles and the crunches and maybe you guys have already received lawsuits, but we've been living in Maynard for many, many years. We've watched the board approve roads that were private. As soon as they broke down, they wanted to become, you know, town roads. Turn, I'm thinking Turner, which is the closest one to me. And I've never really come to the town for anything, except for when we first moved here. We found out. I don't know how, through the paper or something, that we were renting some of our facilities to act in regarding sewage. So I got together a petition, put it on the town meeting agenda and we voted to get the extension of that sewage down our street before we start renting it out to other people. The way I feel about this without telling the many, many jokes is that I have asked and done everything I've been told along the way. And I've only just been told, well, you're number one on the list. It's number one on the list. And I recently talked to the Director of the Department of Public Works and he said, you're number one on the list. I don't need to do a citizen's petition, which I would have had to submit to you last Friday. So I didn't. But if I need to, I can tell you, there are hundreds, if not thousands, and we only have 10,500 in our town who agree that this road needs to be addressed and it needs to be fully reconstructed. The potholes, my son looks, he says, I think they're trying to make a sidewalk in front of our house without telling you because they just can't be filled anymore. I don't want to, I, I don't think it's anybody's fault. I just want to know how do we get it done? And do I have the support of our select board at town meeting to make sure that the money goes to Great Road since it's been identified as number one? And I'm speaking for myself tonight, but if you need more people, I'm happy to go collect signatures because there's not a person who goes by my house that doesn't remember having driven by. And I look forward to you folks responding. Those who haven't had a chance to respond to me because I have sent emails.
Yeah, thank you. Justin DeMarco is online tonight and so he's hearing your comments.
Well, he's incredibly, incredibly knowledgeable and he was very helpful.
We hear that frequently and it's good to hear that about our, our town employees. And the, the whole process of road repair and et cetera is, as you probably know, and you do because you've been following this, is relatively regulated by us in that we rely upon DPW to provide us with their analysis of what roads and sidewalks and whatever can fit into our budget for the upcoming year. And our budget is limited in many ways because we have chapter ninety funds that come through from the state, which aren't that great for Maynard. In a, in a grand scheme, when, when, when you look at the dollar amount and I don't remember what the dollar amount that was allocated to us last year, it might have been, I'm sure Justin does, to a penny. And then we subsidize it as best we can through operational costs. And we can't strip away the operational costs to, if anybody can mute themselves just so that, to the best of our ability, we can do that. And then we have to weigh that with the other issues we've got. So I don't know because I haven't seen this year's list that's coming up and I'm not going to ask Justin to go through this year's list tonight. But we, we typically have a meeting that goes over where the priorities are for our road or in sidewalk projects going forward and we hear them. And if you've been told by Justin that Great Road in front of your place is the priority, then I'm sure we'll hear the same thing at the time that that meeting is held. The other point that I would make is, then I would ask Justin perhaps for a quick response to this point is, is 117 at that spot actually town responsibility? Or is it state responsibility at 117? So Justin, quickly.
Yep. Good evening, everybody. Justin DeMarco, DPW Director for the town of Maynard. Yeah, that section is actually localized and that is the Maynard's responsibility. And without going into major detail on the correspondence tonight, we just received our official allocation of chapter ninety funds and as, as that transpires, our order of operations take place and then we present the plan to the select board for adoption.
Great. So Kate, keep your eyes on our meetings, I'm sure you will. And the process is just about to start because Justin just got the allocation from the state.
Well, I, I hear that you say the process will be that Justin will bring it to you folks.
Correct.
But I want to be honest, I, I've emailed all of you and I've gotten very slight responses. Justin tells me, he assures me, we're number one on the list. But I have heard that for many years and I do have a question. How many of you folks have driven on 117?
I live around the corner from you.
No, Justin, I found you. So.
I'm on, I'm on 117 every morning.
No, mine, me too.
So you all know that this is not an exaggeration.
And Kate, just so you know, Summer Street has same issues, Powder Mill has same issues. So unfortunately, a lot of the town roads are, are dealing with that same circumstances, but.
Yes, sir. I, I do know that. I do know that.
But it's good to hear that, that your road is going to be actually on the top priority list. It's good to hear that.
I, you know, it's never been good and now that Market Basket's come. I think there's been a lot of wear and tear. And I have lots of jokes about, you know, charging the loan, some kind of a toll. You know, and the people that pull trailers. It, first of all, it's noisy. I'm not even complaining about that. My walls are cracked.
Yeah.
And I just want to support in any way, and I mean this in terms of support, I'm not finding fault at all. I just need to know that I'm, I'm doing the right thing to get the job done. So thank you very much for your time. I look forward to seeing you every week.
Thank you.
Every other week.
We look forward to seeing you every other week.
Well, if you ever, you know, if you're ever in the building, as I was this evening, you know, I'll bring some coffee or something, but thank you for your work and I sincerely mean that. Having been a public employee, I know it can be a long and thankless job. Focus on the thankless, but I will be very thankful and thankful that you listened to us tonight.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Same, same to you.
Mr. Stillwater.
Hi, David, before we go to the next comment, I just wanted to say, I, I do think, you know, regardless of the prioritization, you know, Justin has told us a number of times that we are underfunding the roads, that they are degrading at the current level of funding. So we're not even level servicing our roads currently. So in the long run, we do need to figure out a financial mechanism to put it in for the road overall. And, and that needs to be brought up along with sewer and water and, and staff cost and schools. And we need to make sure that that's a priority. But a lot of those things, we are getting to level service on those funds, but we're not doing it for roads right now. So that needs to be a, a bigger priority because the types of comment we just heard will only get more frequent, not less, until we figure out how to put more into the overall road system.
So do I need to get any of my neighbors to come to meetings or, or send you a letter?
I don't think anyone is unaware of the challenge.
Fabulous. I appreciate that. And I also want to say that I'm waiting, I know that you guys got your state money recently, but waiting for that federal infrastructure money to come and hopefully they'll have some for roads. But thank you again for your service. I sincerely mean that from the bottom of my heart. You're doing something that I can't do, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Great night.
All right. Mr. Stillwater.
This is just a question on, on process. Challenging after the last person talked about the need for money. Green Maynard, as you're, I think, aware, was considering putting up a declaration for a sustainability director. And the Sustainability Committee, there's a good likelihood that they will come up with that. But one of the, one of the stopping causes of us to drop that, that declaration was the fact that the finance Fin, FinCom would likely oppose it. It wasn't in the budget. So my question is, I've talked to FinCom, I've talked to Greg, I've talked to Jeff and I, I still don't understand the process of how we go about trying to find money for a a director, sustainability director.
Finding, finding money is never easy in a municipal budget. But the process for anything is, for example, if the fire department wants a new employee, the fire chief goes to the town administrator while he's building his budgets, which tip, which will start after annual town meeting for the following year and starts to build, and starts to say, here are my needs for the next year. So similarly, presumably, anybody who wishes to have a consideration given for building upon the budget would speak to the town administrator so that he or she in the future, some, some person can, can start contemplating the need presented to the board or the public can present their requests to the board and the board can pressure the town administrator to consider it for inclusion in the budget. And it all comes down to priorities at the end of the day. So.
I, I, I do understand that, that part of the process. The state of Massachusetts has mandated that all municipalities will cut their greenhouse gas emissions by fifty percent by 2030. And they did that several years ago and we're making, Jeff, in his presentation to the Sustainability Committee, listed all the things that Maynard had done and in terms of impact on greenhouse gas emissions, there was the solar field and there were some charging stations and there wasn't much else. Maybe, that may be too harsh, but it's not a lot too harsh. And so there's some real urgency and I, I'm sure all of you are having the same con, conversations about climate that is happening in our household. So, you know, waiting a year to think about putting this into next year's budget just doesn't seem right. You know, it seems like we, we need to do something and, you know, you've got the Sustainability Committee charged if, assuming the, the declaration for the, the climate change passes, the Climate Action Plan passes, they will be trying to put together a climate action plan. That's eight volunteers trying to do it and they will go out and they'll get information from the surrounding communities and try and put together the best possible plan. But that's not the plan you would get if you had involved a professional in this. And you'd be able to customize it. It would be much more Maynard specific and a better plan. And I think, I think the town needs it. I think you need it. So my question is, really, how did we do this sooner rather than later?
The, the budget process is very difficult not to crack. And again, we don't typically add positions in the middle of, of a fiscal year because there's no place to pay for it from. So the, the place to begin to add positions and if we're adding a position would be at during the budgetary process. And then we'd have to figure out a way to fund it through the rest of the budget. There are also other approaches that can be used presumably in order to, when somebody is contemplating such a position, is talking to neighboring communities, seeing if there is ways that we can pool resources. Because I'm, I'm certain that I don't know what Stowe has, I don't know what the smaller communities have. Bigger communities may indeed have the luxury of being able to have a sustainability director. Smaller communities may not have that. And it's not that we don't think that it's, that it's an important position or not an important position. It's just that we need a police chief, we need a fire chief. We need, and the fire department is asking for a deputy fire chief. And what would be the priority? The deputy fire chief that's been asked, been requested for years and years or a sustainability director that, how much impact in the, in the grand scheme? I didn't realize, don't, I don't want to, I'm not, I'm, I'm not a, a, a downer on the need for, and I don't want to get into the political discussion, but I'm not a downer on the need for saving our environment, protecting the environment in the long run. But as in my role as the, as a select person, the needs of the community that I see from our perspective do not include at this point, we don't have the luxury of being able to pay for, for that position at this time. If I can be convinced otherwise by the town administrator throughout the course of the, of the year through whatever means that takes, perhaps. And I, I can't speak for the entire board, I can only speak for myself. I just don't, I just don't know if it's going to get traction for a sustainability director for the town of Maynard in, at, at this moment. I don't know if that would be the priority. If you speak to some of the school parents, I think they would say, they think that there might be some other priorities that are there. And that's not to say that they're wrong. It's just, it's very, very difficult. And I know that.
Thank you for your time tonight. That, that isn't what I wanted to hear, obviously.
I'm sure it's not, but, but I can't say to you, we'll get on it, we'll have a sustainability director next week. We can't do that. It just can't, we just can't. Sometimes the answers are not easy to give to somebody, but it's the honest answer.
Okay, I won't take any more time tonight. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Lisa Korfman.
Yes, um, so I'm not really in the position to ask any questions or to request anything. It's just an issue. I want to make sure you guys are, I'm sure you're aware of it. I don't know what's been discussed. I'm an artist. I live in downtown Maynard. I love art space. I'm really worried. I know there's so many artists who've been displaced and I just want to remind, like, tell that art space is really. The vitality of Maynard is because of the artist community and concerned. I think there's fundraising that needed to be done, but there was asbestos released and the old Fowler building where. A lot of artists are can't use it and I'm just nervous for and I wanted to. Like, um, I don't know if anything needs to be done, but I just wanted to say how valuable that space is and I hope. That the artists will start being back there. I don't know if there's a man any discussion.
We appreciate your comment, Lisa. We are on it. We're aware of the concern as well. There have been some discussions and art space has. I think they're working on getting a contractor to start doing some of the repairs that will be necessary to have people back in. More to come and I would invite you to come to our next meeting on the, I think it's the fifth of April. Art Space is supposed to be there. I'm sure they will to discuss just the topic you're talking about.
Okay, cuz it it really concerns me. I it it's like where my heart is and I I feel like living in Maynard. It isn't what it was a few years ago and I really love this town because of the artist community and I. I hope I hope it turns out well.
I think everybody hopes so too. Thank you for your comment. Uh, anybody else with public comments? I don't see any hand raised, so we will move on to the town administrator report.
David, my hand is raised.
Yep, I'm sorry. I didn't see it, Kevin. Go ahead.
Just a heads up, I do have some comments on the solid waste system. Can I, should I reserve that for when that item comes up the agenda?
Yeah, unless it's a general comment on the system itself, um, if you want to wait until that discussion, that's probably better. So it flows better.
Understood. I will hold off until that that comes up on the agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Stillwater, do you have another comment or is your hand just still raised? I'm gonna assume it's still just raised. All right, anybody else? I don't see everybody. I'm on a different computer tonight than normal, so I don't. I don't necessarily see everybody and I don't know how to operate this well enough to know what to do. So, uh, all right. Okay, town administrator report.
All right, good evening. I'm Greg Johnson, town administrator. I'll be very quick. Um, of course, I I highly encourage everyone to go online, check out the town administration report. It's on Board Docs. We put it on the website. Couple of highlights, a lot of building projects are are continuing on and I think they're progressing well. Uh, we have the fire station that's down on Sudbury Street. We have the Green Metal and Elementary School that is the building committee continues to meet and we're still, we're well within the feasibility study phase for right for that right now. Um, a lot of other good work that's going across the across the town departments. Please go online, check that out. And I can, I'll take any questions that the board has.
Any questions from the board on Greg's report tonight?
Uh, just a quick observation and I'm trying to figure this thing out. On the public health, he said that the board of health approved and. To amend the solid waste regulations to um include now stickers or trash bags. Is that an anticipation or what are discussions going to take place? So we're prepared for that? Is that what that is?
Yeah, yeah. So it was it was in. In consideration of the of the discussion that was proposed through Justin to the board last select board meeting.
Right.
In between the last meeting and this meeting, the board of health met and reviewed the same and then submitted their. Um, response. Uh, and so that's what that's an allusion to. But John Robertson, the health agent. Like wrote up what the board of health reaction was and put it in that item. So we can, we can bring that up again when it comes. Down the agenda.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Greg's report? Hearing none, we will move on to the second part of Greg's comments, which is your budget discussion, Greg.
Yep, so just some development, um, which is also reflected in the article, the articles that are, well, you know, what we call. Controls, which is the draft articles for town meeting, which is down below in the agenda as well. A couple of highlights, uh, because of the, um, you can call them savings, uh, which is really just lower projections than what I had projected for ASAP and for health insurance. Um, I was able to shift those funds in my budget recommendations to the select board, uh, to cover a a lot of things, a lot of. Uh, kind of a list of, I'm just bringing it up now, so I'm not. So if you go on to Board Docs, you can see my spreadsheet that just talked. It crunches all the numbers and it kind of lists all the, all the, there's a kind of a a grab bag of different things for the town side. But I was also able to shift um a hundred and six thousand dollars over to the schools as well. Um, which is in response to a lot of what the the school, you know, advocates had been asking for. So, uh, my final number to the schools is an increase over last year of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, again, all of that is then reflected in the draft articles. I also wanted to point out that free cash. Um, the free cash allocation, which I have, and for the most part, it does match what I presented back in February. Um, with one change, which is the unpaid bill for real bear wheel operator. That was twenty five grand. Um, but otherwise the the rest of it is mostly the same. That twenty five grand I shifted away from bleachers. But I believe that a hundred and seventy four thousand dollars towards bleachers hopefully is enough to get us designs, which will then we can then use for advocacy for. You know, construction and whatnot, or or bonding or whatever, whatever approach we take to the bleachers. And I did have a quick uh meeting today with the capital planning committee to go over this scheme and explain as much as I could about this. A lot of, I can't say for certain whether this entirely matches the capital planning committee's proposed capital improvement plan. Because they submitted that back in December before they knew what the free cash number was going to be. But I I tried to match what their priorities were. So, for example, the bleachers, roads and sidewalks, um, and then various capital items across the board. Okay, that's it. I'll take any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I know, flying fast. It's a lot of spreadsheets, a lot of numbers.
No questions. I'll just note the some of the comments I made at the budget subcommittee meeting and I'll I'll make again at the tri board meeting. Uh, but I I am disappointed to see the pay go, the operation will be pulled out of the budget. I know we're making up for it with. Uh, a large number, a large amount of one-time um revenue sources, including free cash. Um, but I I was disappointed to see that go and I do see that returned in a future year and I I don't see the revenue mechanism to do that. So that's concerning towards me. And then I also commented the budget subcommittee meeting and just now that the need to put more money into the roads, um, you know, we. I I almost feel we should be doing that before we start increasing the budget for any of the departments. And I know that's a very tough decision to make, but since we're not level servicing the condition of our roads. I feel that needs to become more of a priority in future years, um, along the lines of not just tonight's public comment, but many, many comments that we've seen over the last. Well, for a long, long period of time. Um, so those are my only two comments. Thank you. Oh, and other than to note that that pay-go capital actually is split between both town and school priorities too. So it's. Not a town and school thing that um some of that pay-go capital does go into the schools as well.
Yeah, it's based on the capital planning committee's, you know, direction. Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, um, next item on the agenda, item number five is the acceptance of minutes. We have two sets of minutes uh. Tonight to accept. Is there a motion on the first set?
Um, I'll move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of March first, twenty twenty two, as shown, authorizing use of digital signature if approved.
Second.
Chris gets it. He was first. Uh, any? Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, we will vote. Justine.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Uh, March eighth.
Now, move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of March eighth, twenty twenty two, as shown, and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, we'll vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Correspondences, we have a list of several, A through N, as Nancy. So your motion to accept the correspondence.
I'll move to accept and approve the meeting. I'm sorry, I will move to accept and approve correspondences A through N as shown.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions on any of the correspondence?
Yeah, I just, I would just like to um ask that if Greg, could you, could you guys keep us um kind of abreast as to what's going on with item C? As it kind of moves through the process. Ten Everett Street, Mr. Keegan?
Sure. Uh, what I heard last is from um our insurance provider that they're sending out another. I can't remember what the name of the services, but they basically do a follow-up investigation to see if there's claims that, you know, to to kind of. See if there's any value to Mr. Keegan's claims that that it didn't capture. You know, the total cost of of what we're liable to.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Also point out that we do have that letter. Um, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was just saying, any other questions? Do you?
Oh.
You already got one.
Um, no, I just want to point out that we did get that the letter is in correspondence for um our chapter nine funding. So it is right here that it is two hundred sixty five thousand nine hundred fifty one dollars anticipated for this next fiscal year. Um, the other part is in theory, and I haven't heard, I haven't paid attention to it since, but the Mass Municipal Association. That the governor had submitted a request for an additional hundred million dollars. Uh, so there's a possibility we might get. That as well. Uh, but again, that translates to probably about thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars possibly. Um, but I just wanted to throw that out there is is that is the number that we're working with plus whatever we end up putting forward with free cash.
Okay. We need to vote on accepting the correspondence. Justine?
Oops, yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Consent agenda, there are three items on the consent agenda. The Coolidge Park Boys and Girls Club Summer Program, the Coolidge Park. Still managed still baseball, softball and the annual spring art walk. So your motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent items A, B, and C as shown in authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Uh, I'll give that to Justine because she was louder. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Justine?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Next item.
The artwork, uh, art walk back on schedule.
Yes.
Very important.
The next item is the use of town property for Memorial Park with Lisa Korfman. And before the meeting started, Lisa had mentioned to me. That at the time that she requested um her date on this, she didn't realize that the first. Um, the first weekend in September was Labor Day, so she was going to ask to change that date to the following week. And I told her that I'm sure the board would listen to her uh request this evening. And for things like the fire and the the police and everybody else, I don't think there would be any change in their opinions on it, but. Uh, so Lisa, welcome. Thank you for coming. Tell us a little bit about your plan and uh. Make sure you get the correct dates from us.
So I got a grant from the Maynard Cultural Council to have an in-person. Or in-person sessions for first Saturday of June, July, August and September. Uh, uh, from uh three to six for the uh for in-person meetings. I have a library. I'll bring my books in that car. I'll make sure it's nice and clean afterwards, make sure, move everything up. We might stay a little later. We probably want to make sure I might start trying to access the place. Bring my stuff over a little bit before three, maybe twenty minutes before and we might stay. Hang out as late as six, but or well, as late as like seven or eight, but it would primarily, the meeting would be officially from uh. Three to uh four thirty. Um, and so, um, I think a couple of people are available on Labor Day weekend. But I realized a lot of people might be away and that might not be the best date, so I'd like to change that to the tenth. And I also have the rain date as the following date if, since it's origami and I'll have my books out. I don't want them to get wet. So the rain date would be the same time on Sunday, on Sunday would be uh June fourth, uh July second. Uh, August sixth and um the new date for September, September tenth and the rain date, the eleventh, that's actually significant. I hadn't thought about that. That it would be September eleventh. We did something last year because I I met with you guys last year about. The Maynard folds and I did a little service there, which was nice. And that would, it it had the interest people to, one person popped in and was like, when do you have your meetings? So they thought it was regular. So that's why I had the interest of doing it as a club thing this year.
Okay, any questions from the board? Chris, you're muted.
Yeah, it's it's just a question for for Lisa and it's 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 obviously up to her, but. Wouldn't the same situation that she's facing on September third be on um February second and so far as that's a long weekend?
You mean July second?
July second.
Yeah, July.
Not February.
July second. I mean, it just, I mean. If 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 there's a concern about, you know, that holiday, why not the next holiday prior to it?
Okay, I can know about it. So so should I change it to the ninth?
I don't, I don't know. I I I I see that you asked to change the. Third to the tenth and I'm just wondering if the same circumstances that led that change would would fall back to. You know, July second because the fourth is 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 Monday and. You know, it's kind of an extended weekend holiday. So I I just don't know. It's it's obviously your your choice, but I just wanted to make sure that you.
We hadn't thought about that.
That option.
Yeah, I I if you would like to vote on making it um the fourth of June, the ninth of uh. July, the sixth of um uh of August and the. Tenth of um uh September, uh, that would work for me and the rain dates would be the following day.
Yep. Okay.
Then I'll take a motion.
I I'll do it. A motion to approve the use of public way Memorial Park in support of the Fun Origami Club on the following dates. All Saturdays with Sunday as a rain date, June fourth, twenty twenty two, July ninth, twenty twenty two. August sixth, twenty twenty two, in September tenth, twenty twenty two. Time of event is three P M to four thirty P M and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Uh, geez, I I that's a three-way tie, so uh. I'll give it to Jeff.
Give it, okay.
All right, so um. Any further discussion? All in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Good luck, Lisa.
Good luck.
All right, uh, next item.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Will this go up on the town hall website? I'd be, I would love that. Would it be public?
Sure, because the board has now approved this use of public land. We can do that. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
I can send along information when I have it. I'll put it, I plan to put it in the newspaper. This week or so.
Good. Yeah, send me, yeah, whatever. You'll probably make it prettier than I would. So send me whatever you want. Yeah.
Okay, I don't think I have your number, but I can call um uh Becky.
Yeah.
Email her.
Yeah, sorry. That's right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, extension of premises, item number nine, Babico's um or Babaco's. Who is anybody here from Babico's or Babaco's?
I'm not sure they're here tonight. Um. But I can speak to their request.
Yes. Yep.
Um, so the request is the same outdoor patio that they've done in the last couple of years. Um. They don't serve alcohol, so they did not have to go through the the formal liquor license extension program. But they would like to continue to, you know, bring their outdoor. But they would like to continue to, you know, bring their outdoor vibrancy to Naylor Court. And we, we ran it by, you know, our internal review team and it was supported unanimously. We are still waiting on a few insurance documents. So, you know, I put that in the motion for your consideration to have it pending the submission of appropriate insurance information.
Any questions from the board on this? And if none, I'll take a motion.
I will move to approve the application for temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area on private property slash parking lot slash municipal right of way. Submitted by Babaco's 35 R. Nason Street, Bear Nason Street, which approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plans submitted, which plans are incorporated into this decision and further subject to the following condition. Appropriate insurance documents are submitted and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second. All right, Jeff, you can get the second. Any further comments? Hearing none will vote. Justine.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you. Item number 10, we have a couple of committee reports tonight or departments tonight. And I must say, I was all excited. I saw my good friend Sally Boobier was online and I thought Sally decided to come to a selectmen's meeting. And then I realized she's here for this. But thanks for being here, Sally. So anyway, the Maynard Public Library is going to make their presentation to us along the same lines as all of the other departments have. Jean McGuire is here along with a couple of members of the trustees. And so take it away.
Hey, thank you. And Megan, Greg said I could ask you for permission to share my screen?
Yes, you can do it yourself or I can do it for you, whatever you prefer.
Okay, all right. I will take care of it. I'll bring that up now. All right. Here we are. Thank you, everyone, for having us here this evening. My name is Jean McGuire. I'm the director of the Maynard Public Library. I started in January 2021, so it's been just a little over a year. And it's been a terrific experience so far. And here on the screen, you can see part of our new logo, which we just launched back in September. We didn't have a logo before, so we're really delighted and we use it absolutely wherever we can, as often as we can. And I will go to the next slide. Hopefully there it is. So first, a brief introduction to the folks who keep library operations running and try to provide the community with the best possible collections and programs and services as a nod to the upcoming Academy Awards. I've called it cast and crew. So here are the folks involved. The library has six full-time staff positions, including the director and three part-time staff. And we also have high school and college students who work as pages for us after school or on weekends or summer breaks. It's a, a small staff, but I think you would never know it from how much they do. Anyone who wants to work at the library has to be prepared to wear many hats and to pitch in wherever it's needed on a given day. You never know when you're going to be called upon to work at the circulation desk or help lead a program or make a repair to the building or the website or something like that. So we're fortunate. This is a terrific team, very committed to the library and willing to be flexible and jump in and help. And they, they love the community. So I feel blessed to work with these folks. So we are governed by a three-member board of trustees, Sally Boobier, Peter Reed, and Jan Rosenberg, all of whom are joining us here tonight. They serve staggered three-year terms. The library director reports to the Board of Trustees and they are responsible for the oversight of the library and its property. We're very grateful to them for the time they commit and the excellent guidance and ideas that they provide. And we're also extremely fortunate to have a very active and supportive Friends of the Library group. It currently has over 100 members. The Friends provide support in all kinds of forms, funding, manpower, ideas. They fund many of the programs that we offer for both adults and children, especially if we need to bring in an outside speaker or we need supplies. They also currently fund the library's subscription to the Canopy online movie streaming service. Much of their revenue comes from the book sales that they run throughout the year, which they work very hard on. And it all benefits the members of the community. It goes right back into the library programming and services. So this past year has been a significant one for the whole world, to be sure. And I think it will go down as a, a very noteworthy year in the library's history, too. There's been a lot that's happened. Pictured here is our, our new sign that went up last summer on, at the Glendale Street entrance. Before there was a, a little old wooden sign that you could barely read. And so now we feel like this is something where more people can see that there is a, a library there and that this is an entrance. So we're, we were pretty excited to have that happen. So these are some of the things that happened over the past year. I won't touch upon every activity listed here. I'll just highlight a few. There were all the services and programs that were offered to help people during COVID. We did the curbside pickup of books, DVDs, computer printouts, you name it. We did weekly outdoor markets that were held, whether it was warm or cold, where people could browse through and borrow library materials, get help by the staff, get some of the kits. So essentially, the library served as a major repository of information and resources for the Maynard community during the pandemic, when there weren't many other places they could turn to. And we've been really gratified that, you know, people let us know how much it meant to them to have that as a resource during the difficult time. Some of the COVID era services and programs have proven so popular that we plan to continue them as we move forward beyond COVID. The popularity of the take and make kits that people can bring home has been incredible. Over 700 take and make kits across 29 different activity areas were distributed to patrons just in 2021. All those kits, each one gets made by hand by staff. First, they have to come up with the idea and then get all the supplies, put these things together, promote them, and it really took off. And it just keeps on going. This winter, we distributed 100 kits for just one craft activity in addition to several other kits. Homebound delivery of library materials is something that was started actually before COVID, but really took off with the pandemic and has not abated. It seems that many people who are physically unable to get themselves to the library learned about the service during this time. So we'll be keeping that going, too. And of course, just like much of the rest of the world, we had to pivot online for our programs. And thanks to the hard work and creativity of the staff, we offered over 200 programs in 2021. And the majority of those were online. The sesquicentennial history series alone attracted 567 live attendees and has since had almost 3,000 views on YouTube. I also want to point out the image in the lower left that you see here because it's from one of my favorite programs. Each week we offer a Read to Zora program in which kids can read a book to this beautiful therapy dog, Zora. And this here was a little girl reading a book in Spanish to Zora and showing her the pictures. We started this program online and I'm very happy to say that as of this past fall, we've been offering it in person or in dog, if you will. And it's just a delight to see people come from other towns to attend this program and have their, you know, they sign up their kids and they drive from wherever they are to come and do this program. So it's, it's really been great. And I feel like it really gets at so, so many parts of a core library mission, you know, with the literacy and, you know, the sense of togetherness and it's, it's really great. So we were thrilled to be able to reopen the library building on June 1st and provide access to all the collections and computers and study spaces that are so well-used by the community. We were also very glad last summer when the trustees voted to approve the plan to end the charging of fines for overdue materials. And in this way, we were able to remove a barrier to library access for many members of our community. So, so that was, that was great. So just a few of the things that happened. I wanted to give a little sense of the sort of before and during COVID. Some things have been somewhat consistent. Some things have increased, some things have decreased. I won't go over each of these. You can, you know, look them over later at your leisure. But I did want to explain for in-building library visits for fiscal year 21, that's a very low number because we were only, the building was only open one month, which was June. So that's why that number is so low. And of course, in fiscal year 20, when, when COVID started, there were several months there toward the end of that fiscal year that we were closed. So we're looking forward to seeing that number climb and climb over the coming years. One thing that has really been nice to see is how many programs were done. And really, this is thanks to the staff making this happen, even though they had to, they couldn't offer these in person and they had to learn new technology. They kept the number of programs held, you know, pretty steady considering. And I really want to call out Sally and Jeremy and Casey and Mark, who delivered so many of those programs and did it with a smile. So that we were able to, you know, keep some engagement going that way, give people something to do when they were stuck at home. And it's another thing that we're going to continue in the beyond COVID era, which is offering some programs just virtually and some in a hybrid way so that people can either attend at the library or do it remotely. And it'll be a nice convenience and hopefully it will help with accessibility for people who, you know, have, you know, a physical condition that prevents them, or it's just easier for them to see and hear something online, or it's hard for them to drive at night, that kind of thing. So we'll be keeping a lot of online programs going. So how do we follow up all that progress we made the past year? We do have an action plan to help us figure that out. And these are some of the goals from our action plan. And again, I won't go over each one of these. I'll address just a few of them. We've already started working on a lot of them. At the top, you'll see the facilities, maintenance, repair, and improvements. I'm going to talk about that some more with a later slide. Last year, we started working on increased library visibility. And one way was taking the library out on the road to events like Maynard Fest and to places like Camellia Gardens to let people know about all the resources available to them, to make it convenient for them to sign up for a card, to bring collections with us that people could borrow. So we'll keep that going. Of course, we continue to visit the Maynard Public Schools and other schools in the community each year for programs. So making sure that the library goes beyond its walls and its website will continue to be a goal for us in the coming year. A few years ago, the library received a grant from Middlesex Savings Bank, which we focused on world language collections and programs. The work was started and items were acquired and then COVID kind of interrupted things. So we've now resumed the work of building those collections, focusing for now primarily on Spanish, Portuguese, and Mandarin, which are languages that have the greatest relevance to our community and surrounding areas. We now offer library card application forms in all three languages. And next year, we plan to offer some programming in other languages. We want to purchase more copies of eBooks and digital audiobooks so Maynard patrons don't have long wait periods for those items. So we're investing some more funds in that. Summer weekend hours, the library has never offered summer weekend hours before. Its Saturday hours were aligned with the school calendar. Most of the libraries in the Minuteman Library Network, which is the network that we belong to, do offer summer weekend hours, usually somewhat reduced from the weekend hours the rest of the year. So we're going to give it a try this year. Opening for a few hours on Saturdays and we'll see how the community responds. And a major goal for us this year is creating a new strategic plan. Besides the fact that we want to do a strategic plan, so we have guidance for the way forward. This is actually required by the state that we do this. And we're also required to have an action plan, which gets updated every year, and we file that with the state. We hope many members of the community, including those on the select board who are interested, will provide input for the new strategic plan. So stay tuned for that. We get requests from the community to do all kinds of important new programming. And there's so much that we want to do. Our goals, some of which are listed here in blue, are pretty ambitious, given our small staff, but we're, you know, going to do as much as we possibly can. And we could accomplish more of the programming that people want with some more human resources. This is a goal from Maynard's master plan that relates to the library. And it has to do with ensuring that the library has the staffing resources necessary to provide, you know, services and events and maintain its role as a hub for community group engagement. So that's something that we, we hope maybe for fiscal year 24 is something that we can work on with the town. It would be really great to bring on at least a, a part-time staff member to support the work that's involved in delivering programs to the community. And in addition, we know that members of the community would like to see the library open even more than the current 42 hours a week. But we won't be able to do that until we have sufficient personnel. So that's one of the things we, we would like to work on with the town administrator and select board for fiscal year 24. So facilities maintenance and repair, another goal for the next couple of years is to make repairs to the facilities and catch up on maintenance. I want to thank publicly Kyle Brainard, the Assistant Facilities Manager for the town, who is very helpful to us and, you know, very responsive when there's an emergency situation. And he works with us trying to come up with the best solutions. And he's just been great. As some of you have probably already heard, two leaks in one of the sprinkler stand pipes at the library were discovered this winter, just a month to two months ago. That entire pipe has to be replaced. We also have leaks at the top of the bump out window on the northeast side of the building. That's what's in the center photo there. That's something that the DPW has been very helpful with and is in process. It's going to be a little while before that gets fixed, but we're working on it. And work needs to be done on the masonry and gutters on the arch outside the library entrance. So there's been some deterioration of the mortar and some mold. So there are a host of other issues not shown here, including some underground electrical, electrical conduit work that needs to be done to repair some outdoor lighting. Some of these things are, are major projects that can't be funded by the library or the DPW budgets, but will need to be covered by other town funds. But there, there is maintenance that should be carried out as a regular part of library operations and budget. The Roosevelt Building is now, the renovation is now 16 years old. So there are things that have gotten a bit worn out and things that just need some attention so they don't get worse, just like in your homes, except it's a very big home. And so that's something that we're, we're facing imminently. This is just a little background on how things have been with the Roosevelt Building accounts. It has had a decline in funding in recent years. And as you can see here from the list, it's meant to cover a lot of expenses. And what has happened is that in past years, that necessary expenses come up and they exceed the budget. And then the town has to fund them through the reserve fund or budget transfers. And it would be good to move away from that pattern and provide sufficient funding in the general budget to cover planned, expected kinds of maintenance and repair. And I'm happy to say there, there's a small increase requested for fiscal year 23, which Greg has supported. And we just recommend that there be some more that we try to get, you know, back and beyond what we were back in fiscal year 18, and maybe, you know, try to get to maybe $40,000 for fiscal year 24. So the library budget, I'll give you an overall picture of this. And how state aid plays a role in that. Some of you may have heard about state aid and wondered, you know, what is that? And how does it work with the budget? So here's an overview, you know, briefly. This chart just shows what the sources of the library's budget are. And you can see that the vast majority of the funding comes from the library accounts that are in the town's general budget. The other sources account for very small portions. I'm going to talk a little bit about, well, quite a bit about state aid and a little bit about gift funds. The Roosevelt Building, that's another, you know, separate set of accounts in the town's budget. And the data processing accounts, that's one, there's one line item for the library in the town's data processing budget. So the state aid to public libraries, what is it and why do we do it? So this is an annual program that we have to apply for, any library has to apply for. It is voluntary. There are many, many good reasons to do it. Probably one of the main reasons is that it gives the residents of the community access to so many items from libraries all across the Commonwealth. And you can see here, as listed in the last fiscal year, Maynard residents borrowed over 39,000 items from other libraries. And that purchase would have cost us about $400,000. So it's, it's just opens up huge worlds to the residents for things that they can access. And it helps communities offset what it costs to provide items to residents of other communities. People from other communities can either come to our library, anybody from Massachusetts can come and borrow things from our library or request it through their library. And it gives us access to federal grants. And that is something that we've benefited from a lot in the past, such as the LSTA grants, which are federal money distributed by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Libraries received a number of those LSTA grants over the years. And here is shown how much we received as the, just the regular state aid award for the year, which was over $18,000 last fiscal year. The award changes every year. It depends on the state budget. It depends on the qualifying libraries. And the amount you get depends on population and things like that. So we never know exactly what it's going to be. It changes every year and we find out sort of in a last minute kind of way. And of course, part of that fluctuation is the state budget. So here you can see that it's something that almost all municipalities in Massachusetts do. You know, virtually all of them decide they want to participate because of all the benefits. You do have to apply each year. You can see that for this fiscal year, out of the 350 municipalities that have public libraries, 347 of them applied and 319 met the requirements. So what are the requirements? Well, first of all, the town needs to increase its appropriation to the library by 2.5% each year, which Maynard has done consistently for some time now. And the library has to complete and submit an annual application and a survey of data from the past year. And we have to meet the minimum standards of free public library service. So what are those requirements? We have to be open to all residents of the Commonwealth. We have to make no, no charge for normal services like lending materials. It all has to be free. We have to be open a minimum number of hours per week and it's based on the population size for the community. So for us, our minimum is currently 40 hours a week. It needs to be five days a week and it needs to include some evening hours. For populations like Maynard's 10,000 plus, the director has to meet requirements, has to have a master's in library science and has to be certified by the state. We have to lend books and other materials to other libraries. So like I said, not just directly to residents, but through the, the interlibrary loan process and extend privileges that a Maynard cardholder has to cardholders of other public libraries. And we have to meet the materials expenditure requirement. And the materials expenditure requirement is based on a municipality's population size. For Maynard, we need to spend 16% of our town appropriation every year on materials that patrons can use, borrow, et cetera, such as books, DVDs, online resources. And the way we do that is the, you know, the largest chunk of that comes from this one line item in the town's general budget for the library, which is called library other supplies. It's not very descriptive, but it's, that is the line item that's used to purchase these materials that, that residents can use. So that gets us partway toward the requirement of doing 16%. So in fiscal year 22, that got us a little over 67% of the way. It was a little down this year. You know, I understood it was going to be a tight budget and tried not to make the increases be too much. But it brought us down a little bit. So we're 65% towards the goal. What that means is we have to make up the remaining amount out of other funds like gift funds and state aid. What gift funds are, that is money that people give to the library, usually in memory of someone or in honor of someone. Or sometimes it's just a donation because they're grateful for a service they provided. So that's what that is. You know, it is a, you know, relatively small amount of the budget, but it's an important part. And as is the state aid. And so what we do is we have to make sure that we don't spend all of those each year. We have to carry over some of those gift funds and state aid so we can make up for the fact that we can't meet 100% of that 16% requirement with our general budget from the town. So that's how that works. So if you ever hear people talking about, oh, you know, the library has gift funds or state aid, we do. And, you know, they're not very large amounts. And we, we do carry some of it over so that we can make up for this difference. But it would be good not to have to use those in that way as that, that sort of safety mechanism each year would be good to be able to, you know, direct those funds toward other things. And that, that's a quick summary. Well, I hope it's quick. I hope that was near 10 minutes. I really thank you for giving us the chance to present this evening. And I would be happy to take any questions or comments that anyone has. I'll stop sharing.
David, you're on mute.
And I said all these great things. Thank you for that presentation. It was wonderful. And I wanted to also make sure that we recognized, I saw Peter, I saw Sally, of course, and Jan, I, you said Jan was on, but I hadn't seen her. But Jan, if you could come up on the screen so that everybody can see you. The three of you elected, of course, and just the volunteerism that you provide. This is another, you know, just an example of how our community comes together. And I remember back in the day when our library was in what we now know as the police station and jammed in there. And what we've got now is such a remarkable change. And I think it's a gem of our community. And people look upon the library as, I think, Gene, you mentioned in your comments, as sort of like a home in many ways and love coming into the library. And it's just, it's always welcoming. So thank you all so much for what you've done for our community to build the library into what it has become today. It's just a tremendous asset for our community. But any comments from the board? Questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I certainly learned a lot that I did not know both about the operation, well, the programming and activity, but also some of the financial considerations. So I'm deeply appreciative of that education.
I think it's also important to point out, or especially for residents that aren't tuned into the budget. There was some commentary this year that there was an increase in arts and recreation. People were very upset about arts and recreation got this increase. And why are we giving money to the fields? And, you know, why are we giving money to whatever people thought arts and recreation was? When arts and recreation is the library? And we see the need for arts and recreation when you look at this presentation and the fact that despite the fact we gave you an increase this year, or an anticipated, if the town meeting goes along with us, increase, there's still more needs. And, you know, we heard earlier in the meeting, there are needs elsewhere in town. And so we're doing our best to juggle and to fill and to, you know, accommodate all of the needs that we have. But again, you guys do a fabulous job at, at, you know, making sure that our money is well spent and the programming is so well done. So again, thank you.
Well, thank you. It's our pleasure. I always say it's a great strength of librarians is they know how to stretch a dollar as far as possible. We really do. We work hard at that.
Sally, your hand is raised.
Yes, I actually, my, my fake hand is raised, but it matches the color of my wall.
That Caribbean sun looks good on you.
So yeah, thank you, David, for your kind words, enthusiasm for the library. And I just want to add, you know, most of my service has been in town hall. And now that I'm involved with the library, it really has been eye-opening. You know, what a community center it is. And even during COVID, or especially during COVID, to, to go to those outdoor browsing markets. There was, you know, just kids and elders and just everybody was there. It is just bringing that kind of vitality into our downtown. And the programming that happens is really, you know, the library I've really come to see is an economic engine for our downtown. People come from other towns. I would say almost every meeting, Gene reads us a letter from an out-of-town patron, you know, who thanks our library for being, you know, their library of choice. So that's, that's bringing, you know, traffic into our downtown. And that's another great benefit of what, of what our library does in its location. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Peter?
David, I just wanted to thank you for those nice comments you made. But I also wanted to thank Greg for his help when we were looking for a new library director a year ago in the fall. You know, I'll tell you, this whole COVID thing, everything gets a little foggy when things happened. But we had quite a few people apply for that job and we had three finalists. And we're thrilled that Gene, we, you know, we offered the job to Gene. She's taken it. And, you know, Steve Weiner did a great job for many years. But Gene has kind of brought in some new ideas and, and I think you saw a lot of them in that presentation. And I'm just, you know, it's interesting for me to sit here and listen to all the other demands that you guys have to deal with. And it helps us understand that we're just part of, you know, quite a few budget constraints. So thanks for your support.
Always. Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you all for coming and presenting. Always welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next presentation is OMS, the Office of Municipal Services. And I assume, Megan, are you going to be leading this discussion?
I am, yes. Thank you. Can everyone see the screen? I'm doing Facebook in this. So, okay, thank you. I will thank you. I am Megan Zamudo, the Assistant Town Administrator and Executive Director of Municipal Services. I'd like to introduce my team. I work with Rick Asman, the Building Commissioner, Julia Flannery, the Conservation Agent and Assistant Town Planner, Janelle Franklin, Department Assistant, Bill Nemser, Planning Director, John Robertson, Health Agent, and myself. Our office has six full-time staff and five contracted inspectors. And our mission is to manage and operate the building and inspections division, conservation, planning and public health and zoning. And the divisions work collaboratively but independently, enforcing all codes, bylaws or ordinances respective to their divisions. Basically, we're the first stop in town hall if you want to open a business, if you want to put on a deck, if you have a housing complaint, or if you want to do anything near a wetland. We also provide various levels of support to the Board of Health, Conservation Commission, Economic Development Committee, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Parking Authority, Affordable Housing Trust, Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Affordable housing is an area that OMS has taken on in recent years. We joined the Regional Housing Services Office in 2019. And since then, we've been working with the Regional Housing Services Office with the state and developers to create affordable housing units through the local initiative program. And that is mostly done through our inclusionary zoning bylaw. And we've had a lot of really good success with those programs. Our office also administers programs for the Affordable Housing Trust, including the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which helped 12 families and the mortgage assistance, which helped five families. And although those numbers are not, you know, as high as, you know, could be, it is a significant administrative, you know, effort to do a monthly administration of these programs. And we're happy to do it. And these programs also have both ended, but the Affordable Housing Trust is looking to do another rental program that would be administered by our office. And also, we finalized a new housing production plan in 2021, which establishes a community vision and goals that help us meet our demand for market rate and affordable housing. It was a record year for building permits in Maynard. We had 602 issued building permits in 2021. And that is 54% above the average for the previous 15 years. We permitted 13 single, single-family dwellings. And a number of commercial permits mostly were related to 129 Parker or Maynard Crossing. Our office also does building and does permits, issues permits for plumbing, gas and electrical. For conservation, it was a year of transition. We said goodbye to our Conservation Agent and Assistant Town Planner Caitlin Young. In the summer, we had VHB fill in for about three months with a consultant, Sarah Nelvin. And then we hired a full-time Conservation Agent slash Assistant Town Planner, Julia Flannery, in December. The commission issued three orders of conditions this year, seven wetlands terminations, one stormwater management permit waiver. They approved new stormwater regulations and permitted this Thomas Street Public Park, which overlooks the Asper River. Our, our office also is very involved in economic development. Bill Nemser and I both sit on the Economic Development Committee. We were also active members of subcommittees for the EDC. We take on local initiatives like our Extension of Premises Outdoor Dining Program. And we do a lot of grant applications. Recently, you know, Shared Streets, our Powder Mill Corridor, Local Rapid Recovery Grant. And we're also in regular contact with some of our regional economic development resources and partners like Mass Development, 495 Metro West Partnership and the Massachusetts Office of Business Development. It's also a year of transition for public health. We said goodbye to Kelly Polatronic, who was our part-time health agent for a number of years over the summer. And then we had the town of Hudson fill in for a few months. And then the town of Acton fill in for about six weeks until we were able to hire John Robertson as a full-time agent in November. So we're thrilled to have him on board and we've been able to accomplish a lot, you know, in the short amount of time he's been here. A few, you know, major items for public health this year. Of course, COVID-19 ruled most of it. We had vaccination clinics. We had a number of housing issues and housing inspections. Food inspections are always ongoing. Obtaining PPE, contact tracing. Really establishing and joining the Metro West Public Health Collaborative was a, was a primary win for this year. We do Sharps collection, mosquito control, all sorts of inspections, pools, tanning, body art, solid waste, septic, funeral. We work with the Medical Reserve Corps, emergency preparedness. And we also manage our contract with public health nursing through Emerson Hospital. Parking, a lot of parking, not all of it, some of it goes to police, but some parking falls under our office and municipal services. We, our goal is to plan, we, oh, so I manage the, I chair the Parking Authority. And our goal in the Parking Authority is to plan and manage so that downtown parking meets projected demand to foster continued economic development. So Parking Authority meets monthly and we review projects that, that impact public parking. We suggest policy changes and we implement the 2019 Parking Management Plan. One of the big items we're able to, will hopefully be able to check off the list this year is improvements to the River Street Parking Lot through a grant that we received from the 495 Metro West Partnership and the Mass Office of Business Development. And that's going to be for improvements to that lot so that it's safer and more usable. And really basically adding more parking inventory to our downtown because it's going to be more usable. So we're looking forward to that. Planning and zoning, of course, two separate bodies. But they began working together this year to modernize a regulatory framework for home occupations and trade shops. They've had public forums and done a lot of outreach and survey work to continue that conversation. The Zoning Board of Appeals heard The Zoning Board of Appeals heard 13 special permit applications. The Planning Board reviewed six special permit applications this year and there were four zoning bylaw changes at the Fall Town Meeting in 2021. This, I recognize, is a tough meeting to talk about resources, but I am going to go on here, but, you know, administration has been reduced twice in in recent years in the Office of Municipal Services, once in 2014 when we moved to an online permitting system. And again, in 2017 for a budget cut. And I wasn't working here in 2017, but I can tell you we're still really feeling the reduction of administrative staff from that time. We're stretched thin and it does, you know, impact, it impacts our whole office. We've also taken on some new responsibilities. Some I mentioned, the administration of Affordable Housing Trust programs. We do the CDBGs, the Community Development Block Grant. We received a regional block grant with several other communities and we've been able to help families that have had their income impacted by COVID-19 in providing subsidized childcare. So that, I think that was, we've been able to help seven families, but that's a monthly kind of ongoing administrative processing effort. It's been a hot year for the real estate market the last couple of years and that really translates in our office to buyers, sellers, real estate agents calling our office to get as much information as possible on properties and they usually need the information by noon so they can close. And so we accommodate everyone the best we can. We have, like I mentioned, our, a lot of our information from 2014 on is digital, so it's easier to pull. But, you know, things before that really are kind of getting files from a drawer and going through it, explaining it to, you know, the customer and explaining, you know, what, what things are, if anything's outstanding, you know, if there's a wetland, could they put a pool there if they bought it, you know, there's, there's a lot to it. So our office has been managing a lot of those types of requests this year. And our, you know, our Department Assistant is also supporting a new full-time employee, which is our, our full-time health agent. We previously had a very part-time person, so with a full-time person, we're taking on some new initiatives and there's more administration there. This is my budget for FY22. But what I wanted to highlight, again, noting the theme of the meeting is what I did request is really the major request here is a change in administrative staff. I requested to reclassify our Department Assistant to an Administrative Assistant position, which is a step above because the duties that are currently being done in that role do reflect the Administrative Assistant job description. And I'm also request, I also requested a part-time Department Assistant. For the master plan, honestly, most of the chapters or sections are really tied closely with the Office of Municipal Services. I think the only one I didn't list here was public facilities, which I'll let Justin handle for the most part. But DPW and OMS work very closely together. We worked with the Master Plan Implementation Committee to look at all the goals and how much progress we've made. There's too many to list here, but you know, we certainly keep it in mind in all of our decision-making, our grant applications, our boards and we remind our boards and commissions regularly. It is, you know, it's a living document in our office and it's, it's guiding all the work that we do. For our long-range vision in the Office of Municipal Services, I'd really like to focus on regional partnerships and increasing services through regional partnerships. We've had some success with our Metro West Public Health Collaborative, which has, you know, is getting money from the state to a number of communities and we're, they, you know, there's staff involved that have been hired and it's really just for us, it's going to supplement you know, our staff that we have and help us provide more. And, and so I'm thrilled about that partnership. I'm thrilled there's, you know, funding from the state to do this regional health effort and there's a few other things like that, you know, there's a, for conservation, there's regional invasive species training. And so we're really trying to look advan, take advantage of what types of, you know, regional efforts are out there. Oftentimes, we don't have the capacity to start them because we are so stretched, but if a neighboring town asks if we want to be part of it, it's pretty much always sounds great, like we'll do it. So that's, that's a major long-range goal for our office. Second, as I mentioned, is an increase in administrative staff. Our office is deadline-driven by legal requirements. When an application comes in, it's on the clock. We don't have control over the number or the, the flow of when they come in. But there's, there's mailings, there's just so much work that has to be done that we really have to triage the situation and we don't have as much capacity to, you know, go for every grant opportunity or create any new programs. We're really just trying to get by and, you know, do what we can. So that is something I'd like to see in the future. And finally, code enforcement. We, you know, some other communities have more resources to be able to survey the town and kind of see what areas need more attention. You know, the, just with our resources, we, we are really managing on a complete basis, which a lot of other towns are doing too, but I would like to see us become more proactive when it comes to code enforcement across the board and across our office. For guidance, these are just some of the codes, bylaws, and regulations that, you know, our divisions in the Office of Municipal Services look at when, when making decisions. Oftentimes, we're implementing state, you know, building codes, wetlands protection. You know, sometimes it is local, but a lot of times it's, it's state. I'd like to just point out some of the, the select board all knows about these, but some of the exciting grant opportunities that the Office of Municipal Services was able to lend a hand to and get for the town, including the River Street Parking Lot improvements. We worked with DPW on the Housing Choice Pump Station on Powder Mill, Discover Maynard. We had a hand in helping them get some, helping the Cultural Council get some funding for that website and that marketing effort, which is exciting, Complete Streets, and then the Local Rapid Recovery Program, which was, was consulting. So that's all I have for you today. Thank you very much.
Well, I, I just want to chime in. Thank you for all the work you do. I know your department is stretched thin and you have a lot on your plate always, Megan, and you always do a fabulous job with what you have to work with and want to appreciate your great leadership in your department.
Thank you.
The Office of Municipal Services is one that is the victim of our community's success. The more we are doing on growth and development economically and, you know, building buildings and putting in new businesses or whatever, the more busy your, the Office of Municipal Services will become. So it makes sense that over the last several years, as we've grown and built our community so rapidly, that the stress has gone on to, to your department. And I think to Armin's point, it's commendable that despite that, you continue to plug along and get it done. And I think we should be proud of the Office of Municipal Services and how it's how it's helped us to, to continue with the growth. It makes, it makes all of us look good because the growth of Maynard is what, you know, we're all about. So thank you. Grant, thanks for the presentation, although you added in parking from the one that was on my.
I did. Sorry, I didn't think you were going to catch that. I did it for my team on Monday and they were like, what about parking? All you talk about is parking. And I was like, good point. I'm going to put a slide in there and that.
I, I suddenly became confused as you were talking parking. I didn't see it, see it on my. Any other comments?
I'll second what's already been said. I, you know, you wear a lot of different hats and you wear them well. I also appreciate you and Jean as well, being upfront about the, the financial needs, which is obviously, as you acknowledge, a difficult topic, but it's very important that, that we hear that regardless. So thank you, Megan. I appreciate all the work that you've done.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay, item number 11 on the agenda is the Surplus Bond Proceeds Transfer from the issuance of 2020 bonds. And I will let Rick discuss this unless you want to flip it over to anybody else, but.
No, I, I thank you for that offer because I will. This is a little more complicated than I usually get into the weeds on. So I hope she's in. Is our treasure collector Jen Welch, are you on?
I am here and ready to speak. Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Sorry about the video. I was having a little technical difficulty. So basically, with the help of Lori Plord, our town accountant, we did find some excess premiums still sitting on the books from previous bond issues. One was from August of 2020 for the Green Meadow Roof. And then the other one was from June of 21 for the fire station and well. So the $4,586.67 is just excess interest, basically. Because when you sell bonds, they're rounded up to the nearest whole dollar. So there's always a little bit of excess funds for that. The second one, $2,200, is representative of two bills that came in for the bond issue that were just lower than anticipated. So I spoke to our security, Hilltop Securities and Bond Council, and this was the way they suggested we handle it. Simple vote by the board and then we can transfer that and then we can use it to pay off any debt service that I have upcoming.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I just had a quick question about, just so I can clarify. So what you're saying is that the, the debt that you're going to use, what you're going to use this money for is to pay off existing, like, the, what you're still paying off for like the roof or the fire station?
Correct. Okay, so, yeah, so like one of our next payments, and I can choose any which one, you know, we want, we can just use that, you know, part of the funds from this to pay that off.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing none. There are two articles, two motions rather to, to make on this. So one at a time, who wants to take them?
I'll move to approve the vote in accordance with provisions of National General Lodge, Chapter 44, Section 20, the sum of $4,586.67, representing excess sale premium derived from the issuance of the town's $2,200,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2020 bonds dated August 27, 2020, is hereby transferred to the debt service account to pay principal of and interest on indebtedness of the town, authorizing uses of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All right, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we will vote. Chris.
Yes.
Armin. Armin, you're muted.
I'm copying you, yes. Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Second motion.
Sure. I move to approve the vote in accordance with the provisions of MGL, Chapter 44, Number 20, the sum of $2,200, representing excess sale premium derived from the issuance of the town's $18,865,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2021 bonds dated June 23, 2021, hereby transferred to the debt service account to pay principal and interest on indebtedness of the town when authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Chris.
Yes.
Armin.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right, item number 12, the Coolidge School Disposition. We're finally there?
Yeah, so, thank you, Jen, by the way. And then, but yes, we are, we are moving forward finally with, with getting that off our books, so to speak. So Civico was kind of in a holding pattern for a long time. This is, I'm just kind of refreshing everyone's memories. So Civico was awarded the proposal, was based, based on their proposal to the request for proposals from the Coolidge School Reuse Task Force, I can't remember the official title, to use 12 Bancroft Street. And it was a couple of years ago, but they were trying to get their financing secured and they're very reliant on the historical tax credits, but over the last two years, the Secretary of State's Office has been just delayed. It's just been tough over the last two years. So they haven't been able to get that, that finance secured fully completely, but now they feel confident or at least they're willing to move forward enough that, that they're, they're going to, they're going to go forward, that they're going to conclude this. And, and so now I'm asking for the board to, to approve it, which is exciting. They had until April 30, I believe, was the last extension to their agreement to, to sign the purchase and sale. And this should be one of the final steps to that end. So my comments in the public content said that at the, that when I wrote this last week, that we didn't have the, the book and page from the A and R recorded yet. Well, we got that. So now what you see in the recommended action in Board Docs has, has what, what I did not have last week, which was just the book and page.
I think there was a comment in the Docs as well from Lisa relative to some action that needed to be taken by the Affordable Housing Trust.
That's true.
And I was trying to recall if the Affordable Housing Trust had taken that action and I don't think we had. There's some money that needs to be transferred to allow for this. We've been working over the last couple of days, the last week or so, trying to set up a meeting. One member is out of the country, so, but I think we're going to set it up if there are the other three or four of us. I don't think this was highlighted as part of the agenda as to what we needed to speak about, but if somebody can reach out to the chair and let him know that this is something that we need to add on to that meeting, that would be helpful.
Right, yeah, okay, we'll follow up with.
And that way you can give them all the detail and everything else, rather than having me send it and then he'll have to go to you anyway.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. Any questions from the board on this topic? When can we expect, assuming everything passes through, that, that we'll start seeing like action, activity up there, that the public can start getting excited about something happening?
I'm not sure. I can't say. I don't know. I don't know. Megan, do you have any more insight?
No, okay.
No, sorry.
They've got to be as anxious as we are about it.
Yeah.
Yeah. One more, yeah. All right, so our motion.
I'll move that the select board sell the real property located on a portion of Assessor's Map 20, Lot 234, as shown, shown as Lot A on a plan by Stamsky and McNary dated January 22, 2020, and recorded in the Middlesex Registry of Deeds, deed book 3170, page 254, Plan Book 145, Plan 45, property, and as approved by Article 5 of the October 28, 2019 Town Meeting, and further authorize the chair to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to effectuate the sale of the property. And I will authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further comments from the board or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Chris.
Yes.
Armin.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. That's, that's somewhat historic for this community, you know, that vote is, is a historic vote. It really is.
Yep.
All right. Next up is a discussion from Justin, sort of a continuance, I assume, on our conversation from last week relative to the Solid Waste and Recycling Plan moving forward. And then you have a secondary item number B also, but let's focus now on the solid waste and recycling conversation as to where we need to go and what we need to do for today, anyway.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Justin American, DPW Director. So yes, this is a continuation of a process and a proposal that was put forth to the Select Board at the last Select Board meeting. And since then, that conversation was a presentation based off of the obligations of our expiring contracts with our caller, E.L. Harvey, and the potential processes moving forward for the foreseeable future of solid waste and recycling programs for the town of Maynard. The motion put forth to the Select Board is to accept the terms of a new agreement with our caller, E.L. Harvey, on one-year increments lasting the potential of three years total. That obligation for FY23 comes with roughly a $20, $73,000 price tag as inflationary prices affect that contract. We also met with the Board of Health last week um, in regards to some of the proposed changes or implementations that can take place. Based off the fact that we um, received grant funding from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. In regards to changing or amending our um, current pay-as-you-throw system. So the Board of Health um, and a motion carried three nil. To approve the use and uh, the the availability of designated bags. Their motion was contingent upon the select board's agreement. Um, and DEP's approval of our process change. So preliminary DP, DEP has already reviewed our process and is aware of our amended process change. But after the select board and the Board of Health, the authorities appropriated to allow for that process to move forward. DEP does have final say in regards to those funds based off of our processes. So this is multiple authorities lining up in a row. So the Board of Health has already made a motion to approve that contingent upon the select board and DEP. So what's in front of the board tonight? Is a request in twofold. One, to approve the use of the proposed DEP grant funding to implement rules and regulation changes. For our solid waste pay-as-you-throw program to phase into designated bags uh, effective July first. Allowing our program to uh, become a little more innovative and controlled in regards to our tonnage. Um, secondly, and most importantly, the select board is being asked to approve the contract for our hauler services. For our solid waste and recycling services. They are not mutually um, dependent upon each other, you could um, say no to the implementation of the new rules and regulations. And approve the contract for E.L. Harvey as a hauler and vice versa, but rarely we need a hauler if you do choose to change or implement that service. But just know that one is not contingent upon the other. Um, and what the, what the DPW is recommending is to move forward with both processes. But I will urge caution and patience that if the board is uncomfortable with the change proposed. And going to designated bags, we have requested through the TA. To form a task force to look at the future viability of our solid waste and recycling program, which could call out. Um, different options as presented, I presented a four-phase option to the select board prior. Excuse me, um, and we could potentially approach grant funding in the future to uh, implement changes if we need to. So just know that, you know, if if you're uncomfortable with those changes. Don't hesitate to avoid that conversation and continue on with the hauler contract, which is the most vital aspect of what I'm requesting today.
Thank you, Justin, um. My comment would be uh, not that I want to kick the can or avoid the discussion uh, relative to the bags. But I think that your proposal of having some type of a task force uh, to look at our entire future of solid waste. Hauling is probably the best way to go about it and therefore continue on with the one-year uh, contract renewal. But not commit to anything else other than that at this point and have a group of people sort of analyze what our options are. Globally, going forward for different ops, different approaches to our uh, solid waste. Um, that that's my thought, but I'll open it up for the board. And Kevin, I see your hand is up and I will give you a chance to speak after the board members have spoken.
Um, I'm in agreement with you, David, I think it's the, my, from my standpoint at this moment is the right way to go. Um, and I like Justin's idea also, putting together a task force so that we could look at long-range uh, solutions. But I think until then, it's important that we get the extension contract going, so it gives us time for us to actually take a look at what what our options are.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with Armand um, and David, but I also want to recognize the fact that um, Justin did apply for this grant. And that does take a lot of hard work and we need to acknowledge the fact that um, that he, he what, he. He works hard for us and and he gets this kind of money and I think that that is important, you know, in the future also. Um, so I do want to thank him for um, his work to try to make this a better system. I mean, since you've been coming, since you've come here, Justin, you have, you have been trying to get trash uh, under control a little bit. So I really appreciate your perseverance with it. Um, and I absolutely one hundred and fifty percent agree with um, a task force. Um, so we could actually have a um, a cohesive uh, decision next year. Uh, to to really kind of see how we're gonna move this forward.
I'm along with the approach as well, um, I would like to see a member of the Sustainability Committee or designate me on the task force, I think that would be appropriate. Um, you know, as as I mentioned last week or last meeting, rather, I I am concerned about one of those scenarios and the implications for the amount of recycling that we'll have. Um, so I just want to make sure that we we don't switch to a proposal that would disincentivize. And I know, Justin, we talked about um, you know, monetary versus um, uh, ease of recycling uh, incentives. But I want to make sure that those are are both analyzed by the task force and that we have a good understanding of what the implications of any change we make are going forward. So um, but overall, I'm with the um, other members who have spoken so far.
To that end, Jeff, I actually do think that we should have a um, a very wide variety of of people on that task force as well. Because everyone is gonna bring their own opinions to this, and I think that it is important to have a lot of um, you know, a variety of town input.
Absolutely.
I think the um, you know, the the letter that we all got, and it's in the packet, but. Discusses the um, you know, impact on. Merchandisers who handle the sale of the stickers and stuff would be taking care of the bags, it would be nice to have one of those people for a voice from that regard. Hmm. You know, whether they feel, whether they feel the same way as um. Green Manor feels about the, you know, the effect or the possible effect of them selling bags now or in the future as opposed to stickers.
Yeah, so it'll be a job for us to, um, and we should, you know what, this should not be something we put off and say, we'll wait three months to before we we start this task force. I think we should create a task force sooner rather than later. And get it started so that the discussion can begin and we can really dig in and have. Cause before you know it, oh, it's summer vacation, oh, well, now it's, you know, school's starting, oh, now it's Christmas, and then here we are, we have three weeks to make a decision. And we had a year, so.
So who's gonna be responsible for that? Uh, Justin, you're gonna put the task force together?
I think.
So my recommendation is to have it to be a TA appointment, because I advise you on budgetary human.
Okay.
So, so that was, that's what was with Justin's, and Justin and I have already talked about a couple of people, so we'll, 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 yeah, it's, the ball is rolling.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Stone, I see your hand is up, go right ahead, please.
Speaking about opinions, I certainly have my own uh, on this issue.
Uh, maybe we have a member who would be volunteering.
Uh, oh, if if the position, consider this my my volunteer.
Okay.
So I I want to rise in um, stark uh, opposition to this proposed bag program. I'd like to first echo the criticism uh, that you received from Green uh, Green Manard in your correspondence. That this bag program is is increasing our single-use plastic pollution while increasing the burden on citizens. I also wish to highlight that in addition, that this bag program is also going to increase our, the net cost to residents. And locks them in to waste zero, uh, yet another economically inefficient monopoly in our solid waste services supply chain. I I really, as a resident, I see no advantage to this bag program relative to stickers or barrels. And speaking of economically inefficient monopolies, many citizens in our town are very unhappy with the performance of E.L. Harvey. And yet many of us have been directly told by other alternative providers that the town's contract with E.L. Harvey hampers competition. It seems like based on the behavior that E.L. Harvey is not under any sort of competitive pressure. That they're, they really don't have to deliver high service for low cost. It makes me wonder if DPW even solicits competitive bids for this trash removal contract, maybe Justin can answer that question. But it makes me wonder if this contract is even competitive at all based just solely on E.L. Harvey's behavior. Uh, it really looks like they take our residents' patronage of them for granted.
I believe that, uh, just, just Kevin, uh, excuse me, I believe that all contracts um, when when you get into this type of thing have to go out. If some sort of bid, if nothing else, they, there's a process that needs to be followed, so there's nothing. Uh, you know, I don't know if this is what you're indicating, if you're implicating or whatever, but there's nothing underhanded or unfair or whatever. Going into any of these contracts, it's all done uh, through really strict guidelines that are set forth by the Commonwealth. When it comes to, especially to contracts.
Well, I just, I'm I'm not, I'm more focused on E.L. Harvey than than any criticism DPW, I think DPW. I mean, I mean, look, we're a small town, like with a limited, with a limited set of DPW administrators. These private companies have vastly more resources dedicated to structuring contracts that benefits them. Um, I I wonder if DPW is, is, I mean, given we're a small town, we're really under-resourced to be able to. Structure these contracts effectively compared to like private companies which have millions of dollars at their disposal, especially since they're oligarchies. What I I think is that unintentionally, the select board is via also through DPW is picking winners and losers. Via a poorly structured contract and it's catastrophically eroding. The freedom of our residents to pick the trash services that best serves their needs. Not only that, but I think this been, this de facto monopoly also winds up costing our residents more. Through both fees and taxes than if there was fair and equitable economic competition. For these reasons, I am asking the select board to table consideration of the contract with E.L. Harvey and the new trash bag pickup. Instead, consider first that's next meaning the private pickup option. This option would not only reduce our residents' costs to tax fees and tax, to trash fees and taxes. But it would also free up scarce budgetary resources to actively fund our roads. Private companies under competitive fresh pressure have vastly more resources than our DPW devised cost structures. That that efficiently serves our residents at lowest cost per services render. In lieu of considering this option, I would ask that they first consider the barrel option, if the select board disagrees with that, then they consider the sticker options. All these options are far superior to tonight's bag proposal. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, um, Justin, you can respond.
Yeah, so I can respond to some of uh, Kevin's um, initiation aspect or kind of elaboration. So right now, the Town of Maynard does not prohibit private haulers from entering into personal contracts with any of our residents. So open and free market is available to every single resident of Maynard right now. Our pro, our program currently follows mass general law procurement. And the contracts are templated set up by the state, by DEP, and then reviewed by our legal counsel. And they are our Town of Maynard standardized contracts, not E.L. Harvey's. We request proposals based on our needs and wants. So carts versus bags versus sticker programs, and then we solicit bids off of that. What people don't understand is the industry is extremely regulated, which drives up the cost. So sometimes free market is an option to drive down prices, but when you have extreme regulation. So when you try to meet environmental needs and goals and you provide strict regulation, that creates a bottleneck which increases cost. So there's limited resources for landfills, there's limited places to get rid of this. There is high regulation on gas pricing, all of that affects this contract. But just know at the end of the day, Kevin, and all residents of Maynard have the ability to hire their own private contractor today, yesterday, ten years ago. And tomorrow, even after the approval of the select board, if they choose to. Everyone of our residents has the ability to hire their own private contractor.
Can I, can I just ask a question, though?
Very quick.
I'll just point something out, you're right, we do have the right to pick any contractor, but you collect our taxes. And then you force those taxes to go to E.L. Harvey. Even if we opt not to use E.L. Harvey, we still have to pay E.L. Harvey, even if we choose not to use their services. And because of that, E.L. Harvey has become complacent and they've delivered less services because they know they're receiving that subsidy from you. That they can compete on cost that their other competitors cannot because they receive that subsidy. And through that subsidy, you have eliminated the competitive pressure to E.L. Harvey.
All right, thank you, Ozzy.
Pointed information, I'll only offer myself as a member through two of my professions. I've had more dealings with the. Ashon, as I mentioned in this meeting, I offer myself as a resource member, thank you, stick this country line.
Uh, you're broken up from my, I I couldn't hear you. I understood that you were saying that you wanted to volunteer yourself as a potential member of the uh, of the task force, all right. That's, thank you, sir. All right, uh, so we are ready to uh, take a motion.
Are they two motions or is that one, one together?
Two, two separate motions.
Two separate motions.
You don't necessarily have to do the second.
You don't have to do the second one.
Oh, okay.
But uh, wait, no, don't we have to, we, the second one funds it, right?
Yeah, that's the one with the money.
But if you accept the article for the general fund that includes that allocation. Then then you in a way have have approved that adjustment based. What I always wanted, cause this, I wrote this before I, before I wrote the general fund article, this motion. So that I wanted to make it clear what I was asking the board, which is. Uh, basically, a a development to my recommendation back from January for the general fund. To of how to fund this seventy-two thousand dollars. And then I, so that, so I.
The second, the second motion is incorporated into the operating budget that you're presenting later on in the meeting.
Yes, and it's even alluded to if back in the TA portion, if you go over that spreadsheet, you see it's in there too.
So then we're just making the.
The first one.
First motion, I could do that, move to approve and accept the terms of the um, proposed solid waste. And recycling hauler contract between the Town of Maynard and E.L. Harvey and Sons. For the term of one year with two one-year extension options as presented.
Second.
I can.
Just a question for Justin, is the uh, extension options uh, our option? Or E.L. Harvey's options, our option?
So, yeah, every contract the Town of Maynard puts forth, we are the controlling owner. So we are always the controlling owner of our contracts, just know that, just in that kind of for every resident. When Maynard puts out contracts, we are the controlling owner.
Okay, all right, is there, who was the second on that I missed?
The guy was.
Justine, okay, any further comments or questions?
So this is just one-year extension, not for the plastic bags?
Correct. All right. Any further questions? We'll vote Chris.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you, Justin, we'll move on to the stat, the stat tech, oh, you have something?
Yeah, I just, a question about the plastic bags, the um, implication that would increase the use of single-use plastic bags. Wouldn't the buying of the bags replace some of the bags that people are currently using? So it seems like it would possibly not increase much on that, all right, just trying to make sure it wasn't misunderstanding something.
Yeah. It's no different than buying a sticker, basically you're buying a bag, right, that's Justin?
Yeah, our current system, people use kitchen bags or thirty-two gallon bags. So instead of buying hefty products, you're buying waste zero products, so it's actually not an increase. Now, like what Jeff said is some people could buy their own trash bags and stuff it into and potentially use two bags, but they could do that now. Nothing's stopping them from doing that now, but technically the bags are just to replace your everyday bags that you put in your trash barrels now.
And not put a sticker on it.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And there, there are other. Obviously, we can have a long debate on the concerns that, there might be other concerns that exist around plastic bags and and everything else as well. Uh, hmm, uh, not exclusive of the comment that I made last meeting. Uh, about the concern about some of the smaller businesses being able to accommodate large purchases of plastic bags versus stickers. And the the small business implications of that. Um, so, um, anyway, that's part of the discussion, I think, that the task force can get engaged in uh, as well, as we talk about the future. Um, as what we might want to open, open up, so, all right, stat tech contract.
So, good evening, everybody, um, again, Justin American DPW Director. So wearing contracts, we typically do all of our contract renewals around this time of year. Um, usually start in, you know, fall, carry over to December into. Um, usually start in, you know, fall, carry over to December into the new year. So Stan Tech Utility provides, um, I'm sorry, Stan Tech Consulting provides our engineering consulting services for our water and sewer utility. Um, they are civil engineers that specialize in public drinking water systems and public sewer systems. It is a very specialized aspect of civil engineering. And typically with that, our general V H B contract can't handle it because they don't provide that professional type of service. And we've uh utilized Stan Tech Services for many years. Before that, it was DeFran Henry and they've transferred names as well. This is an update to the contract as our contract was several years old. And we're updating all of our contracts to meet new standards. Um, to meet legal council standards and new regulations changed by mass general law, et cetera. So what's put forth in front of the board is a brand-new contract to retain services um with Stan Tech uh consulting to provide our on-call consulting and engineering services for both our water utility and our sewer utility.
Okay. Any questions from the board? And if none, we can take a motion.
I'll move to accept the terms of the agreement for the Department of Public Works on call miscellaneous engineering services contract between the town of Maynard and Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated for what a one-year term with two one-year extensions effective January first, twenty twenty-two, authorizing use of digital signatures have approved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Justin, you remain on the uh, the floor with well for treatment plant, well, for a treatment plant.
Right, so here we go. Let's uh, let's knock it out of the park, right? So we are finally at um what I like to refer is almost the finish line of a project's starting point. And when I say the finish line of a project's starting point is it takes a long time to secure funding, design services, full engineering permitting, et cetera, when it comes to new well sources and new water sources. Um, so we have a hundred percent design and with that comes a stronger cost estimate. Now, once we go out to bid, we'll realize the true cost, but our estimates have come in um and they are extremely high, but it is because of the current market. These are, this is a very dynamic and large project, large-scale project. And the current economic market and materials market is very volatile at this point. So we believe our estimate is very conservative. And we aim to be conservative on purpose, um, but we will not necessarily see the true cost until we go out to bid. But with that being said, we can make a recommendation for the remaining ARPA funds to earmark them so that we can move forward with awarding contracts. So right now, in front of you, the estimate is roughly five million and change. I want to say it's five point five million as a total base bid estimate. And we have secured bonding and banding for two point five million dollars in advance. This was done with our last two previous water and sewer rate increases. And then once we received um the concept of, of actually receiving direct ARPA payments, we shifted gears and the board may remember that they earmarked about two point four million dollars for this project of ARPA when we had our original conversations where we were talking about the use of ARPA funds. We are now at a point where there's remaining ARPA funds that have not been designated and the D P W is requesting this to make sure that we're made whole to move forward with the vital project, which is phase one of our water capacity. Uh, excuse me, phase one of our water capacity improvement program. Um, if we could receive that allocation, at least the dedication aspect now, we are in a much more comfortable position to award bid based off what the prices are. But once we see what the bid costs come in, we will be able to readjust this and come back to the board if the bids come in less than anticipated. But if not, we're going to need this vote so that we can cure the, so we can mute, excuse me, tough night for Justin. So we can award bid and move forward with uh contracts and processes to get this project done. Um, so what I'm looking for is um three million one hundred, where's my original? Give me one second.
Three million one hundred thirty-four.
Yeah, one hundred thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars of the remaining ARPA funds to be dedicated to the well for a treatment project. Um, until we finalize the total cost and uh bid processes, which should transpire in about a month.
All right, now I think there's a separate conversation that Greg, do you want to sort of lead that?
Yep. So at the, well, the school, the school department uh through the superintendent's office submitted a request for the revenue replacement category of the ARPA funds that is going, you know, directly allocation to the town. Um, with the justification that over the last year or so, because of COVID impacts to the schools' operations, they were unable to uh rent out the facilities and therefore get revenue through that rentals, which is meant to fund expenses towards the maintenance of, of those facilities. Uh, they submitted a capital request of fifty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars. So um, it is a little bit of a decision that we need from the board some direction. So we can, um, you can allocate as, but as Justin said, like we, the board can, can go back on this, you know, and we can vary the numbers. The board can do the full three point one, three, four million dollars per Justin's um uh recommendation. Alternatively, the board can do, you know, um, three million eighty-two thousand with some change and then the fifty-one thousand dollars to uh meet the school's request. I have requested some more information from the schools. I'm not sure if I've got that yet, but I don't have that for you this evening either way, which was meant to further detail the proposed use of that fifty-one thousand dollars. As Justin has pointed out, um, we don't have the bids yet in hand. So the, it's difficult to say exactly how much money we're going to be needing and how much to finance for well for a treatment. I will say that, that the board had been, I, I won't want to speak for the board, but my understanding was that, that there was a certain um endorsement of the proposal from the town administrator and department staff to prioritize infrastructure for the use of, for um ARPA. Not to say that, that the revenue replacement specifically for the facilities rentals is not an appropriate use for ARPA. It is, it does, it does meet um the, the Department of Treasury's intentions for the use of ARPA. But I'm just saying, you're only seeing this now because it was not in the original um request that was submitted in the summertime uh of twenty twenty-one. So, so we're looking for direction. What, what the preference of the board has or questions you may have?
Or members' questions?
I'm, I'm okay with carving out that fifty-one thousand.
I'm curious whether or not, what, what the um, so, so regarding it, I, I do know that obviously um the, the school committee had or the schools had proposed um use of their ESRS two and three um monies and then they haven't, I don't think they've, I haven't seen anything super specific as to what that money is going to, so I'm just curious if that could cover what their loss of, of facility. Rental again, whether or not it can, it can help maintain the facility the way that they're looking for. I'm not sure if that's the way the funds can work.
I can't speak to that, so I'd have to ask.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Just. Yeah.
I forgot to add the potential implications of the significance of not having the funds ready for contract and award a bid. So if the bids come in at five point five million dollars and we don't have five point five million dollars, we will not be able to award said bid and we will have to go back to our water and sewer rates and potentially adjust them midterm to come up with the funding source or request funds through general fund or free cash or some other allocation method. So just know that the potential of not having the money available to award a contract will have repercussions moving forward in other phases of securing funding and alternative methods.
So possibly the board could, I'm not try, I'm trying to help you guys out. So possibly the board could approve the three point one four, three point three, whichever, the, the amount that Justin's requesting. And then when the bids come in, see if, how much may be remaining. I understand that that is, that is not great news necessarily if you're, if you're advocating for the, for the revenue replacement for the school facilities because you're, because it's a gamble. But it is a step forward.
What's the likelihood, Justin, that, that it would come in lower?
So I will tell you, Dave, so I'm pretty ultra fiscally conservative when it comes to planning. I uh, I try not to get to this point where it's very um, it's very thin. So we have a contingency of twenty percent, which is typically a contingency is fifteen percent. But when you're seeing fluctuations in gas prices of ten and twenty percent in a day, when I say it's volatile, I mean, the market is volatile. So if the bids come in at exactly a peak of a market volatility, that's what the bid is. And all of a sudden, we're a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand plus over. There is the potential for the bids to come in lower. We are putting conservative numbers. I always like to put conservative numbers, Dave. But what we're really looking for here is a little exercise in patience. Now, I understand that others may need this funding source, but are they going to spend it in a month? And is it something that is needed now? And if so, maybe there is alternative financial options in regards to that. We will know the bid costs in about a month. What we need to make sure is appropriate is that we have the funding available to secure the contract. And at that point, the project will actually lapse over fiscal years. So we will be into our F Y twenty-three budget, which we have allowed a five hundred thousand dollar reserve fund into our water enterprise fund that could handle some of these fluctuations. We have capital improvement lines that are dedicated in that funding source. So if we can bridge that gap, then we can come back. The D P W, I assure you, is not going to be greedy in this nature. If the bids come in at five million dollars, we're going to come back and say, okay, the, the, the remaining ARPA funds look like X. And now let's have a conversation of where we want to dedicate them next. Um, but I do, I do caution the board that we should have these funds available to secure the contract and move in an expedited manner for this project.
So the most, if I'm hearing this, the most fiscally prudent decision for us relative to assuring that we get the major project that we need to move forward with approved is to be patient, approve the full amount with the hope and the expectation that there will be some revenue left over that can then be discussed about transferring over to the schools to fill in some gap, whether it's going to be enough for their full gap or for some of it. And who knows, maybe there'll be more and then we'll be having a happy discussion saying, okay, schools, here's your fifty-one, and now what do we do with the other fifty-one, you know, whatever that number might be. Um, so is that sort of an accurate portrayal of where we are? Yeah, all right. Seems to me that it makes sense then to secure the larger picture. I hate to um, to tell the schools no, but um, and.
But it's not a no, it's a maybe.
Well, at this point, we, we can't make any promises, but, you know, uh, I don't want to lose out the implications of the bigger, the bigger issue is so much important. It's not, schools aren't important, but so much bigger relative to the future of the community um, and the development of the community. It seems that it's probably uh wise to give the full amount with the hope and expectation that the bids come in lower and that then we can work with, with those numbers. What do others think?
No, I agree with that.
I'm aligned.
You're with it?
I'm aligned, yes.
Yeah. Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's what we will do. And it's, it's not for lack of interest. The schools don't have a representative here this evening to speak to us. It's because they had a meeting scheduled at the same time we did and uh they, they couldn't have anybody here to speak. But uh, you know, my, my hope and expectation is this bid comes in lower and that the, we can address the other issue of elsewhere. But I think it's too big of a, of an issue to take a risk with that and then sort of stop something we've been working on for months. Everybody agree? Then I'll take a, we'll take a motion then.
I'll move to approve the categorization of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds as revenue replacement based on the U S Treasury's final rule implementing the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, S L F R F issued on January sixth, twenty twenty-two, as the following ARPA project request, Department of Public Works, water treatment in the amount of three million one hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars and authorized use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Chris?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right. Now we've got a whole series of draft articles to uh, to go through. What I might suggest is if we look at them briefly and see if there are any that we can vote quickly without any discussion because it's just routine stuff. Um, and as I look at them, um, uh, authorizing revolving funds is routine, um, the uh, I don't know if there's any others. Uh, the transfer from water retained earnings looks like it's fairly routine because that's just pu, putting it into another bucket, right? Uh, and so, all right, let's just do them one at a time and hopefully it'll work just as smoothly. So let's look at control C, which is authorizing the revolving funds. That's a routine motion of routine article that we have every year. Greg, if you want to talk about each one, feel free. But um, it just authorizes the revolving funds so that we can have, for example, the plumbing inspector or whatever. The money comes in, the money goes out, just establishes the revolving funds. I think recently we added one for the recreation department. Um, and it's just standard every year, same type of deal uh for these revolving funds.
We added the electrical vehicle charging station last time.
Right.
Okay. Um, we didn't, you, you can see the numbers almost never get adjusted either, not, not, like, we look at the numbers every year. So like we did adjust the council needing ban service this year, for example, but um, and the, and the E V charging stations, we increased that, but like we, yeah, this is money in and then it goes towards that purposes.
Right. So any questions on that? I'll take a motion.
Move to accept and approve draft control C, authorizing revolving funds, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E, one dash two, as shown, and move forward to finance committee for review and comments.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Control D is the general fund budget. I don't know if you want to save that to the end or just move it through. We've already had a discussion on the budget. We know what it is. We know what's there. Um, Greg, is there anything major that's in there that you think we should know that we, that we should at least focus on?
No, no, I mean, not, not beyond.
Changed, not beyond.
So in the F Y twenty, so back up at the top of this agenda, there was the F Y twenty-three and then in it, it was like kind of my bright breakdown of developments that have come since, well, basically like over the last couple of weeks, which is, this is how the budget process works, right? So you were describing it earlier, which is, so like, you kind of fast forward through fall and then through the winter and then by January, I submit a budget. Then after that, we get a little more information and then, and then we also go to the joint budget review in February. But as I get more information in this case, because of Aspet and uh health insurance, um, then we, we make some, I make some recommended adjustments to the time. So what you see here is a reflection or it captures all those budget adjustments, recommendations, and then puts into this form. But the major, major change is a couple odds and ends. One is the seventy-two thousand dollars for, for the um Harvey contract. Um, the change in benefits cost because we don't have to pay the six percent like I thought we were going to have to. Um, and then I think the other one to really highlight is um the schools. So because of the savings that we had from, from those others, um, I was able to increase my recommendation to the schools, uh, Maynard schools in particular. So it's a slight less than Aspet, but it's a slight more to Maynard schools.
Okay. Any questions from the board? If not, we can vote. Or make them, I guess, make a motion.
Back.
Go ahead, go ahead, Jen, Justine.
Sorry, I move to accept draft control D to town general fund budget fiscal year twenty twenty-three as shown and move forward to finance committee for review and comments. And move forward to finance committee for review and comments.
Second. Goes to Armand. Uh, any further questions or discussions? We'll vote, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Alright, um, Control. F, which is sewer enterprise fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which is based upon the. The rates that we set.
Right. So back in, back in like October or November, when Justin first proposed the rates, and then, and, and the board had heard from. Um, our consultant Doug Gardner about, about the reallocation of the indirect costs. So what, so F and G on this, on this agenda, which is the sewer, and then, and then the other one is the, um, water. Those are the budgets to reflect the rates that the board already approved.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Any questions from the board? Otherwise, we can take two motions back to back.
I will move to accept and approve draft Control F. Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three as shown and move forward to finance committee for review and comments. And I will move to accept and approve draft Control G, Water Enterprise Fund Budget Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three as shown. And move forward to finance committee for review and comments.
Second, in seconds.
Uh, I think we can take it as one motion for both of them. I don't know if it makes much difference, but, uh, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote, Chris?
Yes, on both.
Jeff?
Yes, and yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Alright, that brings us to the Community Preservation Control H.
So they, so that, this is again pretty standard. A lot, most of these articles, by the way, are standard, but I'll, I'll, I'll point out the ones that, that are not, that are kind of atypical when we get there. This is not an atypical. So, so this one and the next one I are the business of the Community Preservation Fund. So for the public that's not aware, on your tax bills, there's a surcharge, uh, for, that, that has been approved. From the Community Preservation Act, and then that surcharge gets collected, and then the Towns Community Preservation Committee. Um, uh, determines the budget for the use of those funds. So H is what to do with the money that they collected, and then I is their plan of what. I, I've referred to them as the buckets, but like the, the allowable use of those funds, and there's four criteria that goes into. But so H, what we're looking at is, is the cap, uh, Community Preservation Committee's recommended use of. The, uh, of the collective funds. So, um. The big one to highlight, I think, is, is there's a couple to highlight. One is, um, the digitization of the towns' records, which is a pretty, it's a pretty. Exciting, well, I think it's exciting. Maybe a lot of people don't find town records exciting, but I think it's a good idea. Uh, I, it's a, it's a step in the right direction to make sure that our, our long-term preservation of those really historic documents. And, and the town clerk is over the moon, so she's probably listening. She's really excited. And then, um. Uh, really good projects overall, of course. Um, but another big number, you, you know, if your eyeballs go all the way down to it, which is. A hundred and ten thousand dollars towards the Keenan Schools, Keenan Girls softball field. So the, so, uh. Uh, recreation i- is a pretty major player, so to speak, when it comes to the community preservation funds. And so the RC, the Maynard CPC is, you know, tries to be, um, as generous as possible towards those, towards those needs. And that's another example of it. So in that regards, obviously, that's very heavy public works and school department required or, um, cooperative. So they, they should, you know, the use of those funds should be vetted by those departments to make sure that it's done in accordance with those plans. Um, has been, you know, other, has been, always been the case, like that is, that is the expected approach is that money then gets. Well, and they have to buy, buy by procurement law, of course, so it all has to get, um, done in collaboration with the town departments.
Okay, any questions?
Sorry, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, sorry about the Keenan Field one. Um, I'm assuming so, and, and I know that. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we've seen this before, but I, I know Justin's probably on top of it, but I know that he. Has drilled into us that we need to make sure that, um, maintenance won't be an issue or isn't an issue, um, when putting these things forward.
This is offense, so it's not. No, I would, I know, Justin, speak to, what, what do you think about the softball field?
Greg, you had it, but so. This applicant, this applicant worked with our office from the beginning, and we, you know, we've discussed with both CPC. And any applicant that puts forth or comes to the DPW. Now, with CPC applications. They don't necessarily always have to come to town support. They don't go to Megan's office all the time. They don't come to my office all the time. But these applicants, um, you know, came to the DPW, and to the school committee in advance, and really went through their due diligence. And we focused them on infrastructure that does not necessarily have a large impact on long-term operating costs.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Alright, any further questions? Hearing none, we'll vote, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Did we make a?
Quick question.
Make a motion?
We'll make the motion.
No. Move to accept draft controls H, Community Preservation Reserve Fund appropriation fiscal year twenty twenty-two as shown. And move forward to the finance committee for review and comments.
Second?
Alright, now we'll vote, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
I'll, I was, I'll keep going, Mr. Chair, if you want.
Yeah, go right ahead. I, I assume the next one's the, uh, just the buckets where the money goes into.
Yeah, and the just one thing to highlight is that we, we're paying off debt, so, um, a good amount of that money goes through, pays off the purchase of the golf course. But that, that, this is right, so otherwise, there's not a lot of variation.
Yeah, so it, it gets divided up, third, one-third, 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 and the money is dependent upon how much they collect in general tax, so.
Yep.
Alright, any questions? If none, we'll take a motion.
Move to accept draft Control I, Community Preservation Fund Budget Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three as shown, and move forward to finance committee.
Second.
Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Alright, next one is the free cash appropriation. Take it away, Greg.
Yep, so, um. Uh, this is free cash that we got collect, you know, that was certified from FY twenty-one. So the, it, it's kind of a weird concept to understand is that, you know, more than six months ago, this is money that we ended up, that we didn't, that we had collected but not spent. So, and it was three times more than what we had, we had projected. So when I, I told the Capital Planning Committee, you know, don't expect more than fifty, five hundred thousand dollars. As it turns out, we get one point five, which is great. So with that, we were able to, as Jeff pointed out earlier, shift over the capital pays you go funding. From the operating fund to this free cash, which is not ideal, but I recognize that. But this, this, that allowed us to free up some operating funds so we could fund some of the other, uh, expenses. Um, and so what the list that you see here, I can't say that it is endorsed by the Capital Planning Committee. Although it is largely in alignment with the priorities. Set by the Capital Planning Committee. I did have a, um, meeting, there was a meeting, Capital Planning Committee meeting today, where they asked me to kind of clarify. But the major change was, um, the, the, the shift for, um, alumni field bleachers design. To, um, the, uh, well, I, I category, I define it as the one summer street reuse. Which could be the demolition and abatement of the old fire station. So we're, we're still not sure what we're going to do with that property, but I want to take, I, I recommend that the town take advantage of the one point five million dollars free cash. And put it towards that, because I don't know where I'm going to get that money in the future, and if that, it if, and if we want to do something with that property, but developers are saying they can't do anything with their existing property. So I know, I, you know, basically take advantage of the opportunity that we have for free cash. That's my recommendation.
If we don't use that, does it come back to free cash next year?
Yes. Yes, that's right. So, and I can only, you can only use it for what's defined in the article, so in this case. So, um, and the rest of it does. Yeah, I'm pretty sure the rest of it does align with, with what the Capital Planning Committee had, had, um, proposed.
I did have a cat, I, I had a casual conversation with one of the members of the building use committee, and they were talking about how, um, it, it's kind of. It's hard if there's no money behind, you know, their, their reuse, because you, you know, there's nothing that, there's, there's nothing that can be done. Again, you can't make it, you know, you can't make it, um, appealing to developers. You can't make it.
Right.
That there, there's really nothing you can do. So it, it kind of, he, they were actually very surprised that, that this was actually, they, they hadn't heard that we were trying to do this. So, very pleasantly surprised.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions, comments? We'll take a motion. Which line, uh, Jeff, are you concerned about? I just want to see it in the line here.
I think it's the fact that it was taken out of the operating.
Justine has my concern correct, yes.
Okay.
Alright, so you, so what I'm doing is, out of this long list of, which is great, like, we're making a lot of strides towards capital. But it's not being captured in the operating, just Jeff's point, so.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
It's a longer term comment than one specific to.
Got it, alright, fine.
Um, but I will move to accept draft Control J, pre-cash approcher appropriation as shown, and move forward to the fin- finance committee for review and comments.
Second.
Any further comments? Hearing none, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes. The omnibus was, do we really need to vote on that?
No, that's no, that's part of.
I didn't think so, uh.
Uh, it's kind of a hodgepodge of materials down there, I apologize, but it's, um, yeah, Article L is their next, or control.
Uh, how about H? We've already done that, so L, uh.
So L is, L is an interesting one. So this is not, this is not one of the standard ones that I was referring to earlier. So this, this, my understanding, and Jeff can speak to this more, but my understanding is that, um, the discussion was originated amongst the town charter review committee. Um, but it felt more appropriate to go to the bylaw review committee, so I, I was provided this by, by the chair. And it, what it speaks to is something that the town has been striving to do anyways, which is provide transparency and, and reporting of. Financial reports. So, so I'm, I endorse this too. I think it's a good idea. And it's not so restrictive to something that we can't accomplish. I mean, it is, and it is also in alignment with the goals, uh, as I proposed, the general fund to fund. More budgeting platforms anyways, so. Right, it's, this is, this is feasible. What it's saying, and I'm sorry, I kind of, I kind of cut to the chase, but what I was saying is, um, it's, it provi- it requires, um. Financial reporting regularly on the town's website. Which is okay, like, we can, we can do that. We've, we've been trying to do that through ClearGov as well, anyways, so. We can do that.
My, my only question would be, um. It's required, but is there any penalty proposed for failure to, to fulfill?
Uh, I mean, I'm, good question.
I guess, I guess, you know, it, it, uh, future select board can take it out on the town administrator for failure to comply with the. With the charter requirements, but if there's no, there's no penalty for failure to do it.
Right.
I, it's.
Like, like most things in the charter, frankly, it's the, it's the towns saying that this is what the town wants.
That's true, that's true, although you think about some of the others, it'd be a fifty-dollar fine for failure to, you know, whatever.
So.
Good, Justine.
No, go ahead, Jeff.
No, um, just, um, following up from David's question, could, with this in the bylaw, um, escalate to the attorney general in a way. Would not have without it.
What, so it has.
A, a future town administrator not submit that, and then somebody register a complaint with the AG's office saying, you know, according to our own bylaws. This should have been done, or, you know what I'm saying? I'm, I'm just trying to.
I don't know, I guess they could. I don't, I don't know what the AG's office would, I don't know if they usually get into the jurisdiction amongst. Good question, I don't know, I don't.
I, I don't think it would change my.
Yeah.
Opinion on this, but just.
But I mean, there's, there's a number of, I mean, I, well, like, we're, the bylaw, bylaw review committee. Always does a great job of trying to be on top of trying to update and keep things, because just that's how it is, you know, as the town charter review, as you guys have seen. There's a lot of like, there's a lot of like outdated committees. So we don't, we don't have an industry and finance committee. Is anyone calling the AG's office on us?
Yeah, it's probably a moot point, because what, what happens other than, other than you get. Response from interested citizens, which is really what the, the intent of this thing is to encourage interested citizens. Same thing would happen if we didn't hold our February meeting, which is in the charter. There's nothing in the charter that says if you fail to do this, you know, you all lose your, your seats on the select board. That's not, uh, that's not in the charter, so that it's, I guess it's very similar. So my, my question was probably just a moot one. I thought it through, I, you know, I, I was getting too into the weeds.
It's a good question.
Uh, my question is just about the, uh, posting on the website, because you mentioned that your goal is to put it on ClearGov, so does ClearGov? So is it one of those, you'll just link from the website to ClearGov, or does ClearGov fill, fulfill the, uh, requirement for it?
Oh, that's a good question. So I. Don't know yet. So I, I think at the minimum, we can just upload the, the spreadsheet. But, but if it's, if it can get tied in, because spreadsheets, the point of ClearGov is make it more, um, digestible, like readable. So if we can do it that way, that's probably better.
Any other questions? We can take a motion.
I'll move to accept draft Control L, amend by law, chapter thirty-eight, periodic financial reports. And move forward to finance committee for review and comments.
Second.
Any further questions? Hearing none, we'll vote, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Draft Control T, which is for the ambulance, uh, transfer funds from the ambulance receipt. We've spoken about this before, um, and this is to, for the per, for the, uh, matter of a purchase of an ambulance. Seventy-six thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars twenty-six cents. Any questions from the board on that? Hearing none, we can take a, a motion.
Does that control?
T, right?
T.
I moved to its, yeah, moved to accept and approve. Draft Control T, transfer from ambulance receipts reserved for lease appropriation as shown. And move forward to finance committee for review and comments.
Second.
Any further comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Control O is the, uh, Community Preservation Fund closeout. These are, these are monies that were previously allocated that were not spent for one reason or another that get returned back. Uh, as a result of not spending them. And that's all part of, that's typically part of the article itself, saying that if not spent by X date. It will be returned to the fund, and that's.
Actually, David, that's not what this is. Um, these are undesignedated. These are ones that were never. Um, these are.
Ever allocated?
Over and above, yes. So when they put in their estimate, this year it's four hundred thousand, but in years past, it was like three fifty. And we bring in more on the one point five percent. Anything over and above goes into undesignedated.
Okay.
And they keep a year of that in undesignedated, should their estimate. Go in the other direction so that they would have it to cover costs. And then, that's why this is almost like two years behind. They, there, there's always one sitting in undesignedated. This is from way, you know, almost two fiscal years ago, that's been sitting in that undesignedated and is going into the buckets. Which is, um, and the amounts that go into the buckets are actually. By the CPA law, it's like ten percent for the, yeah, so.
Alright, thank you for the clarification, Madam Chair.
Job.
No problem.
Alright, so now we know what the, uh, these allocations are. Um, so is there a motion?
Move to accept draft Control O, Community Preservation Fund Closeout Undesignated Fund Balance as shown, and move forward to finance committee for review and comments.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Chris?
Yes.
Armand? Yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Alright, Control S, manate golf course receipts transfer. Greg?
Right, so the, um, the plan is to use revenue that we've been getting from the golf course and will get from the golf course. This is a projected amount, sixty-five thousand dollars, that will then go towards, um, the maintenance and capital upkeep of that amenity, which is the golf course. So, uh. Right, this is, this is just goes towards, well, specifically with the the golf course, the country club, if you think about the clubhouse itself, it. The envelope, which is the roof, decides the windows, um, it needs, it needs some work, so this, this would be money towards that end. Uh, sixty five thousand dollars.
Any questions? Hearing none, motion, this is O, uh, S rather.
Yep.
I'll move to accept and approve draft control S, manor golf course receipts transfer as shown and move forward to the finance committee for review and comments.
Second.
Any other questions, hearing none, we'll vote, Chris.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, we move to you.
Yep, so prior year bills is um, actually something that we don't do very often, which is good, like, but in, it's not so atypical. For municipality to have prior year bills, in this case, it was uh, bills related to Wheel Liberator, which is, that's the name of the firm, that's the company. That um, that the trash is sent to by Harvey, um, and 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 pretty much everyone else in the region goes to Wheel Liberator. So there was a couple of bills that were not paid for in FY twenty one, um, fortunately, it's, it's, it's rather minor. Effect on our free cash, because we were fortunate to have one point five million dollars in over free cash, but that's where this money would be coming from.
And any questions from the board? If not, we can vote our motion.
I'll move to accept and approve draft control U, prior year's bills as shown, and move forward to finance committee for review and comments.
Second. Seconded by Armand, any further comments or questions? We don't have any, we'll go with the vote, Chris.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, uh, controlled U of V is a allocation of bond premium.
We did this, I think, last town meeting or the meeting before, um, but the, if, this vote will allow us to to use. And this gets a little more complicated when you come and talk to bonding or whatnot, but we have a bond. When we bonded out, there was a premium that was associated with that, and it gets into the sponsor comments and describes all this, and um, and and the rates and the coupon rate, etc. But because we basically have money. Acquired through through that bond, then we can put it towards back to paying off that, which, so it's nineteen thousand dollars, I didn't do a good job explaining that, I apologize. But if you read the sponsor comments, it does it much better than I did.
Nice.
So it's pretty much what we kind of, what we kind of did just a little while, just earlier in the meeting.
Similarly, yep, but you, you, we did do this at town meeting, I want to say it was in October, but it might have been.
I think it was.
Right.
I'm here, Greg, this is Jen, if you guys have any questions that I can help with.
Thanks, Jen.
Yeah, Reader's Digest version of what is, what is happening with this.
So it's extremely similar to the um, previous vote you took, the difference being is that. Um, this is an excess premium like that, um, the previous one ju- because you're using it to pay debt. Can just be a regular vote during a select board meeting, um, this is to use for something specific. And that does require an article. Only difference.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, we can make a motion. Again, this is for me, control V.
I'll move, oh, forgot it, sorry. Move to accept and approve draft control V, allocation of bond premium to costs of well for a treatment project as shown, and move forward to finance committee for review and comments.
Second.
Uh, any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote, Chris.
Yes.
Armand. Yes. Jeff.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Guy, I think this is the last one, W, uh, which is the acceptance of the easement, which we've discussed before. The whole uh, access to town well sites over behind uh, the one twenty nine Parker Street project. Where we needed to gain access, that's correct, Ju- uh, Justin. Just allows access to uh. To to the town wells, well sites through the Parker Street project.
Yeah, this the, this is defining the easement as a permanent easement in perpetuity, so if the ownership changes hands, it's always on the deed. Which allows us to access our asset for the foreseeable future.
Yep, okay, simple enough, we'll take um, uh, a motion on article. Uh, W, control W.
Move to accept and approve draft control W, acceptance of easement Parker Street property as shown, and move forward to finance committee for review and comments.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Chris.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, and we already did C and D, which is on this list here, so I think we're done.
Q and R.
I don't think we did Q and R.
Q and R, let me find them.
We didn't do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Draft control Q, which is transfer from sewer retained earnings. I was, I was going down the list at the bottom of the page.
Right.
We still have a bunch to go, all right.
No, no, just these two.
All right, draft control Q. What's that?
Are we reading the motions now, or?
No, wait, first, we want to hear what draft control Q is all about, transfer from sewer retained earnings.
Right, so this is in alignment with with the with the other conversation about the enterprise budget, but it's, but both this one, the water.
Water, waters it together, yeah.
Yeah, and so, so similar to the conversation back in the fall about setting the rates and how that was can provide. Um, uh, you know, you basically need to build up the capital, and this is, this is related to that, it's the funding scheme to pay for our larger items.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, we will uh, take a motion. Control Q, what's that?
We move them together.
Yeah, we can, they're very similar, yeah.
Move to accept and approve draft controls Q and R, transfer from sewer and water retained earnings as shown. And move forward to the finance committee for review and comments.
Second.
Second, nicely done, Jeff.
Yes, all right, any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote, Chris.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I am a yes, is that all of them now?
That's all of them, thank you Chair and the rest of the board for your patience and 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 deliberation going over that, I know it's a lot. Um, but it, but it's, it's a big step, big step, and then we'll draft a draft warrant, um, make sure, you know, all the department heads and. Town council and everyone, and it'll, that's all go to finance committee and whatnot, but this is the big step towards.
Other than potential citizen petition articles, is this all of them that we've gone through now?
I believe so.
Okay. All right. Chairman's report, uh, I will make it quick, although I I really don't want to uh, expedite my comments on Nick Tommel. Uh, Chris, thank you for earlier, uh, when there was a number of people here and having the moment of silence with Vic. I considered Vic a friend, and um, he, I think Chris and I both uh, were. You know, he he would call us or call me and Chris, I know he'd call Chris regularly as well, um, and. You know, he would, he would always, his message was always cheerful, even though you knew that when you called him back, you were going to hear. Uh, about it, um, he referred to himself as the blue eyed Polack. Um, and you know, this is the blue eyed Polack, Colin, I hope you're having a wonderful day, and uh. And every conversation with Nick Tommel was a pleasure, even though he was, at at the same time, he was. He was being critical, but teaching a lesson, and I always skewed his con- conversations with me as uh. As teaching me a lesson, whether it was be on the history of Maynard or on just things about being a leader in this town. And being a uh, or a a person on the select board, and what somebody from the community historically would expect of that. And he was always a gentleman, and his line as, I I assume he did the same for anybody who went in there, but he, when. If I bought flowers from his store, even if I stopped in the community to just have a conversation with him, um, he would always go to the little. Uh, freezer where the refrigerator with the flowers, where he would say, take a flower home, be a wife, maybe we'll get you an extra potato. And that was his line, and he was that just a kind man and just a wonderful friend, and I will miss him. And um, uh, you know, his funeral is Fri- is Saturday uh, over in Sudbury, and um, it it'll be a uh. A sad day for the entire community, we we owe a lot to Vic, he he did a lot for all of us in keeping us on our toes. Anybody else have any comments, feel free.
No, I just reiterate all all that you said about the guy, he was, he was fantastic, and he, I don't know, I don't know what's going to happen with the um. Reams and reams of paper he had stacked up, because he would come to our meetings and call us out on something that was settled in nineteen seventy six. And then two days later, I would get in the mail in his, in his handwriting, a letter to my house with a copy of the piece of paper from nineteen seventy six. Or the actual piece of paper outlining exactly what the um, select board and town meeting decided in nineteen seventy six. That we have now neglected.
Right, so he would go over and he would pull out the book that that he'd have every town report, he'd pull it out, he'd open it up right to the page. Uh, and and show you where the motion was taken and why what we're doing now is illegal and improper and everywhere, oh my god, it was. He was incredible, he had a memory, he had a knowledge of of the town, why things were done, it was just incredible.
I think I had a, I think I'm going to show my age a little bit and say that I might be one of the only people who remember the um, the mimeographs that used to come in the color of my shirt.
Yeah.
I would get those notes, that's what he would mentally, but.
Yeah.
I I had someone at one time that told me I should, I should silence him during our meetings in public comments, because he was just a big blowhard and everything else. And I said, well, I said, I'll be happy to do that the next time he's wrong. The next time he's wrong, or the next time he misinformed us about something, I'll tell him to stay home, and it never happened, because, and I knew it wouldn't, but he was just a, he's just a um. A classic piece of Maynard's history, that's sad that he's gone.
And remember his line, I think I said this last, last week, or I said it to somebody, um, every meeting that he was at, um. He would get up at nine o'clock on the dot, and he'd lean forward and he'd say, thank you all for the use of the hall. And he'd walk up at nine o'clock, his wife wanted him home at nine, but he kept the tradition up even after his wife passed away. Um, he would leave at nine o'clock, so, um, God bless Vic, he was a good man, a good friend, and I'll miss him. So, moving on, I uh, since we last met, I had an opportunity to um, to meet with the school committee chair. In another leadership meeting along with Brian and Greg, great discussion, uh, really, it was, it was a lot about the budget. But it was also a lot about just um, values of things and how we see things and where things are at, very, very positive, we didn't agree on everything. Our values aren't that diverse, but just where, how we uh, I guess, how we approached budgeting in certain times, etc. Uh, but very, very positive, good discussion, and uh, it's just so nice to have. Um, that collaboration ongoing where we are uh, building a relationship between the schools and the town, it's really good. Um, and we don't, we don't agree every, to every meeting, but we walk away with uh, the respect for each other, and we set a new meeting, so. We haven't had anybody say, no, we're not, we're not getting together next time, so, good, good for us, I guess, uh. Then um, uh, was my next time topic, um. Oh, I wanted to comment on also since we last met, the um, this, the the check celebration with with Kate. And Senator Aldridge and Representative um, Trahan, which was really nice. Uh, it was nice to have our Congresswoman here in town, um, and she really does, I think, understand Maynard. Um, and she um, she, even though she gave us our Christmas gift without uh, Justin's approval. Uh, where we learned about the bridge that is going to be repaired, um, and it was, it was nice to have her here. And her conversation with us, Justine and I had a nice ten fifteen minute conversation, not having to do at all with town politics. Um, but you know, even her, her sharing her memories of the events in January sixth uh, of twenty twenty one. Uh, was, was interesting to hear, uh, but to have her here, to have her just recognize Maynard and know Maynard is good. And it's good for us, and she is going to help us with the transition to our new representative, and I truly believe that will happen, which is a good thing. And then um. I think that is it, because I can't read what my last comment was, so that will be it, so, Chris.
Now, there's one thing, it's just in relation to the um, human re- re- relations committee. Do we have, Greg, I, or Megan, maybe either one of you might have it, do we have something that um. Outlines the process for committee chairs of appointed, you know, for appointed people, so, you know, they understand, and everybody is kind of on the same page. As to what, what the process is, because we now have a, a, you know, kind of a questionnaire. And then from the questionnaire, it, it, you know, it goes before the board, we have a conversation, we vote to appoint or not appoint somebody. And then they're required to get sworn in before they can act on a committee.
Right, good question.
Do we have that, do we have that in writing, so that, because I, there's a couple, there's a couple folks that, um, and I I had sent you an email today about one of them. It's a couple folks that is supposed to start, or theoretically start with the um, human relations committee on Monday night, the twenty first.
Right. And, so I don't know if we have that in writing.
Well, one of them I never heard of, one is the woman that we did um, last time, we we okayed her for the last. In our last meeting, and her, the name is, you write the second, but.
Shneke.
No.
Shneke was a reappointment, Kimberly.
Kimberly Connors, yes, so it was Kimberly Connors, and there was another name.
Yeah, I don't know the other person.
I don't, I don't know where that name came from, I don't know who that person is, but I just, I'm just trying to get to a point where I can pass it along to like, you know, Elliot or. Caroline, who were the actual members of the committee as opposed to liaison, so they know that they have to instruct this person to. You know.
Right, what the appointment process is, yeah.
And fill out the, fill out that form that we're now, we'll fill out, and then just what the process is, because I don't want, I don't want to have her show up at the meeting expecting to. Sorry, you're not a member.
No, I think that's a good point, so most committees, I I've been around long enough, and the, and the members in it kind of understand how the appointment process is supposed to work, but the, but the HRC, one, it's pretty new. And two, it has people that obviously don't have the same experience, so I can, I can follow up with Elliot, and then otherwise, to your point, it's probably a good idea if it's not already online. Just describing how the appointment process and the expectation, yeah, we can, we can do that.
That's it for me. Appreciate it.
Armand.
Um, I had the pleasure of attending the um, high school production of Into the Woods, and I have to say. What a talented bunch of students, um, it was very, very well done, so it's um, it it was just a. A tremendous production, and and Maynard should be proud of these students, um, and I'm hoping that these type of uh. Musical theater production will continue, um, I know we're losing, from what I understand, the artistic director was, we did a fine job, but um, hopefully it will continue. Uh, along those lines with music, um, some of you may know already, I'm working, I'm uh, putting together jazz festival for the town. Um, and already secure the sponsor for the entire, you know, jazz festival, and uh, probably be sometime in. Either the twenty fifth or the twenty sixth of June, um, I, just so happens, um, I was lucky enough to put together a bunch of uh, great musicians. From the town, and and they're working together with with the, with me to get this thing happening, and um, that's also part of the. Um, the EDC downtown subcommittee from, uh, that John Kramer is working with, so I'm helping him with that, trying to get some. Activity downtown and getting some, some more foot traffic and getting some excitement, so hopefully that'll create that excitement. Um, and then something that you might hear down the road, um, I am, and I spoke to Greg about this. Uh, putting together a s- uh, an advisory committee for the senior center, it's got to be a cross section of uh, representation. That includes a member of the COA, and something that once I get the people together, I'll come in front of the board and get um, you know, an approval. Again, appointed, so that we could get some um, uh, analysis and find out studies, and what, what can we do about short term, long. studies and what what can we do about short term, long term solution for the senior center. I think they deserve it. So that's just, uh, that's all I have.
Hey, Armin, should
Yeah.
I'm I'm just curious, shouldn't like a task force type thing be organized by Greg as opposed to being organized?
Yeah, I spoke to Greg. But I mean, it's up to him. If he wants to do that, um, he and I were kicking this back and forth. It's up to you, Greg, if you want to.
That's possible. But I mean, like, the the board had already given direction a while ago that the that your preference, not necessarily you, the five people on this, but but like three years ago at least, you know, to have the Council on Aging to to really put forth the effort to look towards what the future of the senior center could be. Um, I think Armin is just saying that like with without that sort of like, what this is kind of helps that efforts in my, that's my understanding as well. So yes, the time is that can can do a task force for anything, right? But but I, but I, but I kind of also sort of, I also, you know, sort of like follow in the lead of the the select board, right? So the select board, in this case, Armin brought up this concept, then I'm not going to do something to kind of go around that or do it ahead of time. It's already been brought up, so to speak, right? So I'm not, I'm not going to get anything otherwise.
My my concern is more that Armin's organizing.
I'm not going to be, or, yeah, I'm not going to be organizing. I'm just kind of, um, I'd say you want to say just facilitating it, but I'm not organizing. I'm just
Again, still.
Okay. Any board member can propose, I'm not, I'm not picking, I'm just saying the concept. Any board member can propose a committee, right? So so Jeff Swanberg recently proposed the concept of a sustainability committee, right? But he he himself didn't say this is who has to be on it, etc., etc., right? But he he proposed it to the select board. Same with the Human Relations Committee, same with the others. Like, this is just how committees sometimes are formed. That's my interpretation of.
And I'm not proposing people. The people that are are on the subcommittee right now are working on getting names. So, you know, I'm not.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you. I thought you said that you were, it was going to be.
I'm working with them. Yeah, yeah. I'm I just, I just thought of the process and they're going to continue doing it. I'm not going to be chairing it or anything like that. So
Well, no, because you're not.
No, I can't. I know I can't. So that's, I'm not going to do that. But I just wanted to, I just wanted to plant the seed and get get the, you know, get the process going, basically. That's all. But if I'm doing anything that's, I mean, that's not correct, then please slap me around. So let me, tell me that I'm not doing something right. That's all.
Help, helping a group of people who wanted, you know, if they want to organize themselves and need some direction to get themselves in a position where it can be re- recognized by Town Hall. Um, I I guess that's okay. You know, I think Justine's concern is that it it would, it could appear that you're taking on a role that it goes beyond what's been assigned to you by the Board of Selectment or Select Board uh, to do that.
Yeah, I could, I could understand that. Yeah. I'll make sure that it doesn't look that way.
All right. Jeff?
Uh, just a couple of updates. Um, the Sustainability Committee met for their second time, their first regular meeting. They appointed um, a co-chair, Kate Wheeler. Uh, so they now have two chairs and they presented a greenhouse gas inventory. Uh, Justin, I know you were asking for a copy. I'll send that to you. Um, but they're they're off to the races and they're moving now. Uh, Budget.
Who's the co-chair along with Kate?
Uh, Priscilla Ryder and uh, who was already appointed as a co-chair in their first meeting. So now they have two co-chairs.
All right.
Um, Budget Subcommittee Meeting met in addition to the normal topics. We did spend some time talking about the uh, just echoing David's comments about improving communication and and the process. Um, you know, as we approach it, I I don't think it's too soon to talk about next year's budget when we get into the fall. Um, and I thought those were some some very good conversations between um, the the constituent members of that committee. And I want to thank Greg for his his comments and thoughts and ideas as well uh, in terms of of making that, you know, what is naturally a difficult process as smooth as possible. Uh, and then the EDC met this morning, uh, but they mainly covered what they're going to present to the select board at their next meeting when they, when they've come to present to us. So I'll, I'll let them share themselves. So, oh, I'll second Armin's uh, comments about the the high school production. I actually was able to attend uh, a production at Sanctuary and at the high school and at Acme on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So to be able to take in three live shows, all quite well attended, all within walking distance. I drove to the school. It was uh, snowing. It was just great. Um, and then the the show at Acme was also just phenomenal. So um, but it's it's nice to see a little bit of life breathing back into town. So that's it for me.
Justine?
Uh, no comments tonight. Thank you.
Sorry. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All right. Just wave. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Night, everybody. Great night.
Hi.